Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December 1st meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. Everyone would be so good as to take a moment, just silence their cellphones. Note, this meeting is being taped by FCTV. I'll start off by introducing members of the board and the staff. To my far right, the audience is far left, starting as Jerry Potamus, who is an associate member. Moving across is Frank Duffy, who is a full voting member. Mark Fineran, who is a full voting member. My name is James Morris, I serve as the chair. To my left, your right, is Suzanne Murphy, who is the board's clerk. And at the other end of the table is Scott Peterson, who is a full voting member. We are also joined this evening with Norian Stockman, who is a zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is applying, with applying the state zoning statutes, as well as the town zoning bylaws, in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public, and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing, and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comment should be directed only at the project. Please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Comments can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or to ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but it is provided for the FCTV viewers. The board may continue a hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board shall then discuss the proposal amongst themselves, then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote, three to two, is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 17. First up this evening on the agenda is public comment. This public comment is directed towards any project that is not specifically on the agenda this evening. Does anyone have any public comment they'd like to make at this time? Seeing none, we will get into continuations. First up this hearing evening is hearing 59-22, "Oh Boy," One Lookout Avenue, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove a portion of the existing dwelling, remove and rebuild the roof over a portion of the dwelling, adding a one-half story, rebuild the rear of the dwelling, adding a second-story addition. Do we have any additional correspondence or submissions from the file?
We did have quite a few correspondences from the attorneys on both sides. Would I, do I read?
I don't think you need to. I think we could just reference.
I believe it will be addressed most likely during the hearing for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Laura Moynihan. I am an attorney from Falmouth. And my clients, Mr. and Mrs. O'Boy, are here tonight, as well as Tom Bunker from BSS Design, and Tim Luff, the project architect. Just going to spend a couple of minutes reviewing some changes that have been made since the last hearing for you. So, we did revise the elevation plan further. Get it to go upright here. So, you've heard a lot of opposition regarding the addition at the rear portion of the dwelling. So, the architects went back and revised this portion of the proposed building, and have brought that height down, so that it is now 11 and 1/8 inches higher than the existing one-story portion of this structure. So, I do have another plan that I can show you that shows the difference. And, of course, it's, even though I saved these upright, they still don't seem to... So, this plan shows the difference in the elevation. This line here is the outline of the ridge of the existing one-story. And this angled portion of the roof here will be taken off and not rebuilt that way. There'll be an angled roof. So, this shows the 11 inches essentially, in the height difference of that portion of the, of the structure. I submitted correspondence on the issue of the increase in the non-conforming nature of a structure. I've maintained in writing, I think at length, that the Falmouth zoning bylaw does not specify that any increase in height without any increase in the non-conforming setback or lot coverage is an increase in the non-conforming nature, or an extension to deem a detriment. Other bylaws do have that type of language, and I've given you examples of Dennis and Chatham in my materials. I've also submitted in my materials that importing such language into the Falmouth zoning bylaw, I think, is the, not the job of the Board of Appeals. It's for town meeting to amend the zoning bylaw. I think our zoning bylaw is based on what's the so-called cube theory, that as long as you're not going out or increasing lot coverage, but you're going up and you're still staying within a conforming height level, that you're not deemed to be extending the non-conforming nature of the structure. I've also reviewed the historical commission minutes again. We discussed that at the last meeting. Since this application was filed, there was no reference to the project plans here specifically being reviewed by the historical commission to support the opinion letter that was given to by Mr. Haddad. I also spoke with the assistant town planner, and she did confirm for me that the plans for the project were not reviewed by the historical commission, that there was a discussion regarding the Crown Circle Historic designation at the commission, and this project came up as part of that discussion, but the specific plans weren't reviewed. And that's significant, because we've given you a very lengthy letter from Mr. Luff, who has, I would say, expertise in the design of historic structures in various historic districts on Cape Cod. And he's discussed at length the series of additions over the years to this structure that do not have historic significance, and how the proposed plans will actually correct some of the absence of historic details, and bring it back into the appropriate historic character. So, I think that's, that evidence is very important. We do hope that these plan changes will satisfy the abutters, Mrs. Walsh and Mr. and Mrs. Zawada. It seems to be the prime focus of the objection was the second story on this rear portion of the dwelling, which has been removed, and the height has now been reduced twice. So, this particular height of about 14 feet 8 inches, I believe, is, from what the architects are telling us, as low as it can go. So, we do hope that that's going to satisfy their concerns about their own individual views and vistas. I think that, from the photographic material that you have, and from being up at the neighborhood yourself, I think you can see that this portion of the dwelling, without that second story, really isn't visible or obtrusive to the other areas of the neighborhood. We've also given you written confirmation from the applicant's contractor that all of the work is able to be done within the boundaries of the property. So, with that, I just wanted to summarize the benefits, because we do know that the board has to make a finding here, that the changes proposed are not substantially more detrimental than the existing. We do have, I think, a significant improvement to the aging exterior. We're improving the historic character of the dwelling with the cleanup of the series of poor additions. We're modifying the front porch to essentially open that up, to increase or enhance the views of the neighborhood through that porch area down to the water, removing a front-step encroachment into Lookout Avenue. The rear shed at the property is being removed to improve neighborhood views, and the rear non-conforming setback is being eliminated to the rear property line with the removal of the shed. New stormwater management, new water service, a reduction in lot coverage, no increase in bedrooms, and we're allowing for a main-floor bedroom for this family. Currently, all the bedrooms are on the second floor. And overall, it's an update I would submit to the dwelling and the site. And with that, we would ask the zoning board to find that the changes are not substantially more detrimental than the existing, and to grant the special permit. Thank you for your time, and consideration of all the written materials. I know it's been a lot, so thank you for that.
More questions? Start with you, Scott.
Attorney Moynihan, could you pull up, or do you have handy, the left-hand elevation, what's existing and what's proposed, please? Sorry if you have to dig into your file. I just wanted to see the existing again and the proposed, for left-hand side.
So, this is the existing left elevation here. This is the existing shed. This is the existing one-story portion of the structure. This is the front porch that I was talking about. And then, the proposed...
And the ridge height for that?
The ridge height for that, I know that there's an increase of 2 feet 7 inches. I don't have the exact current height, but the, I can, I can get that for you, Tim. I know that off...
That's okay. The increase is what I wanted to...
Okay. 2 feet 7 inches, yeah.
And if you could show the proposed?
Yes. So, you have the porch here area. You have some new windows going in on this side here. You have the one-story rear portion of the dwelling with, again, with additional windows, and you have a dormer window here.
No other questions? Thank you.
Suzanne?
How are you addressing the septic situation?
Tom, do you want to? Tom Bunker's here, he could answer that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the recommendation. My name is Tom Bunker, BSS Design. The septic is staying as is. We discussed that with Scott, the, Scott McGann, Health Agent. And he agreed that this addition is not creating the need for any further variances, if the septic had to be upgraded, that there, under the current conditions, there are variances required to upgrade it to as close as we can to Title V standards, and this addition will not increase the numbers or increase the severity of any of those variance factors.
Four variances are needed, correct?
I can't remember. I'd have to look in that. But it's whatever there are, and it's the same, same number of variances.
He did say in his letter that it would be much more difficult to replace or to alter the septic.
That was his initial, but there's a follow-up referral from him.
And how did it change, since the addition is not changing its...
Excuse me?
How, how did his opinion change if the addition is not changing its footprint?
The, his opinion changed because I discussed the plan with him when he, after he made his first, after he made his first referral to the board. I discussed that with him, and pointed out some, some things that he was missing. I mean, I know that on the face of it, it looks like it would be making it harder, but the main point is that the existing foundation there is a full cellar, and what's being added is a crawl space. And a full cellar requires a 20-foot setback to the leaching area of a septic system, and a crawl space only requires 10 feet. So, that, adding that crawl space is not increasing the need for, is not creating any more variances, and is not making any of the variances worse than they are.
Thank you.
Mark?
Could I just add? I think the key there is that there's no change in the number of bedrooms. So, that's the issue.
Without the addition to the height in the main building, what would be the height of the ceiling and the floor, without adding the 2 feet?
For the upper story?
Yes.
Tim, do you want to answer that?
Tim Luff, Architect Associates, were the ones who prepared the plans and made the revisions. So, as it currently sits, the attic space doesn't really comply with the, with the ceiling height that we would need for, for a habitable space. So, in order to get that, we have to, that's, that's the need to raise the pitch, and to be able to get, you know, a 7-foot to, for the most part, of the, of the addition. We have some knee walls, and basically, what we had originally designed gave them a decent space, but then we dropped that again, reduced the roof pitch, so that the amount of square footage was substantially reduced, in order to be able to meet the Mass. State Building Code. So, it's habitable space, but the amount of space we can actually use under roof is smaller than it was than when we originally designed it.
Is there a number you can put on the height, existing?
Existing?
Yeah. Inside, you know, the ceiling.
Well, it's unfinished, so it's really difficult to answer your question, because, and there are beams and rafters all over the place, so, you know, there really isn't a ceiling height, to be honest with you, Mark. There's, it's, it's basically rafters, right? It's an attic, so there really isn't a ceiling height.
And you couldn't manipulate the dormers, so you wouldn't change the overall height of the building?
No, because if, in order to get the roof pitch to comply with, with the Mass. State Building Code, we'd have to have at least, you know, unless it was a flat roof, a rubber roof, I'd have to have at least a 3-pitch. And we have, I think, a 4-pitch. So, in order to be able to make that habitable space today, it would be almost completely flat, which, again, could it be done? Possibly, but it would give you a very, very small amount of space. And, we're talking about trying to please two masters here. We're trying to create something that is architecturally pleasing and fits in with the neighborhood, and also something that meets the Mass. State Building Code. So, that's not always the easiest thing to do.
Well, there's a third master here, which would be the decision of the court, I believe, and this one here is the Reska Duca, which I've read thoroughly a couple of times. And the judge concluded that, you know, it, to raise that roof is an extension of the non-conformity.
At the main house?
Yeah. But however, it's a small-scale addition, such as the constructions of dormers and closing a porch or whatever, may also be considered de minimis expansion. And hence, my question, operator under that, can't we do something and not raise the height of the building?
We can't. No, not, not meet the Mass. State Building Code, no. Not if they had room. Okay.
And again, Mr. Fineran, I guess the test there is, is that substantially more detrimental than what exists? Putting it up about 2 feet? You know, if you look at the size and scope of the other houses in the neighborhood, we've given you photographs of that. I mean, that, I think all that evidence goes into that. If you're going up, you know, 2 feet 7 inches over that height of building, is that substantially more detrimental than the existing peak height? I would say it is not. It might have a slight impact, but I don't think it's substantially, substantial impact. And again, you know, we've had this long discussion about detriment, et cetera. It doesn't mean that it can't be approved. It just means that the board has to weigh that against the benefits of the project, and determine if it's substantially more detrimental.
Well, one of the, there's many things we have to consider, but one that I consider is that these bylaws were established because it was determined that the growth and the size of these structures on these small lots needed to be constrained. And in so viewing, you have to consider that as this building exists, it's already 60% over the allowed lot coverage, and at some point, a line has to be drawn.
Well, I don't think it's 60% over.
Yeah, it is. It's 40% lot coverage, and the maximum's 25, so you double, yeah.
Isn't that 15%?
No.
It's, okay, well, I'm, 40%, 40%...
Well, you multiply the 25 by 4, and the 15 by 4, you get 100, you get 60, so it's 60% over what's allowed.
Well, I have to respectfully disagree. I think it's only 15% over, but again, this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. It's not a structure under, and it's not an application under the lot coverage section of the bylaw. So, it's, it's a little bit different. It's, it's also, when you get into the bylaw about, you know, deeming an increase in height under a conforming level as a, as an extension or a new non-conformity, yes, you could look at the Reska case, but as I've pointed out, the courts have also said that certain bylaws have specific language to that effect. And I think what's relevant is the recodified zoning bylaw for Falmouth says, it specifically says what an increase in non-conformity is. It says any alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change that results in a, quote, "new" non-conformity shall be deemed to be an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure. That's the revision of the bylaw, that if our bylaw was concerned about an increase in building height being automatically deemed to be an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure, that's where that language should have been put in, but it isn't. It clarifies the current section that we're operating under, because it says any new non-conformity. But aside from that, you know, I think that we've, we've tried to go to great lengths here to reduce this addition at the rear, which seemed to be the primary focus of the opposition. You know, in doing that, there's less room available. The applicant would like to renovate the half-story, and I guess it's a matter of the board to look at that increase in height, 2 feet 7 inches, whether or not that's substantially more detrimental. I've given you two examples of two other cases in this very neighborhood, where houses were rebuilt, that maintained the same non-conforming setbacks, and did have a height increase. And the board in both those cases found that it was not substantially more detrimental. And again, I know that these cases are on a factual, case-by-case basis, but I think it does, it is telling of the nature of the height and bulk of the, of the buildings in the neighborhood. You know, there are large homes in this neighborhood. There are homes that have 2 and 1/2 stories. There are homes that have 3 stories. So, so I think it would, in my opinion, it would be very difficult for the board to find that this 2 feet 7 inches is substantially more detrimental than what exists. But for those reasons, weighing everything else that's involved.
Do you have additional questions, Mark?
No, I just would have to say that I disagree, because an extension, whether it be horizontal or vertical, represents an increase. And I think the same determination could be made from the Duca paragraph, but I'm all set for now.
Right. Questions?
I don't have any questions for now.
Questions? Comments from the public?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Megan Hall. I'm from Moriarty-Troyer-Malloy, and I represent Mr. and Mrs. Zawada. And we continue to oppose the project. At this point, the applicants have revised their proposed plans approximately four times, with the latest revision having been yesterday. And through the course of this, applicants have solely revised their plans, reduced their plans little by little, rather than having prepared a plan in the first instance that took into consideration the neighborhood concerns, as well as the neighborhood views. And it really, at this point, appears that the applicants are simply trying to get away with what they can. And simply, with all of the materials that have been submitted, and all of the follow-up correspondence, it really has been a waste of the board's time, I would submit, as well as the abutters' resources. Following the latest set of plans that were dated, or in the correspondence from November 22nd, I note for the board that the proposal could have an issue. It's difficult to ascertain from the copies that we are able to see. But the plans appear to show that the second-story floor square footage is approximately 965 square feet, and the third floor is approximately 565 square feet. Now, the issue here is that pursuant to the code, a structure's height shall not exceed 35 feet or 2 and 1/2 stories. Now, the issue is the half-story, which is defined as that portion of a building under any type of sloping roof, which is potentially habitable, as defined out of the Mass. Building Code, and within which the number of square feet in the area is never more than half of that story below. With the numbers that we're able to look at on the plans from November 22nd, the square footage on the third floor is more than half of the square footage of the second floor. So, I would request that the board ask for clarification from the applicant on that point, as it's difficult for us to ascertain the exact calculations, given the quality of the scans of the plans that are provided. of the plans that are provided. As I mentioned, uh, the abutters continue to be opposed to this project, and we would submit that the applicant still has not submitted any evidence that they have complied or submitted proof that their project complies with special permit criteria. And as you know, Section 243(c), 240-dash-3(c) directs the board to assess whether an extension extends a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs views or vistas, or does not reasonably conform to the average dimensions found in the neighborhood. As we've previously discussed in our correspondence, as well as at the last hearing, this proposed project still does not fall within those parameters. Uh, the revised plans continue to show a substantial increase in the overall height and the mass, which is non-compliant with the dimensional requirements. It appears that, you know, we're trying to ignore the increase in the height of this third story by removing the proposed second floor over that existing first story. The height increase is still going to significantly contribute to the bulk of the structure. That's including this eleven-inch rise in that existing first floor, as well as the opposed increase on the existing half-story. And as we've set forth before, as well as in our correspondence, any increase in the height that encroaches on the required setback where the increase in height will occur within such an encroachment, there shall be no alteration as of right. Um, and I'd also submit to the board, um, there's been a few comments made about the project being in conformity with the neighborhood. And I have copies here of the square footage of, uh, copy of the square footage of the homes in the neighborhood, which is Crown Avenue, rather than the properties that have been submitted by the applicant or on brand. In closing, as we've mentioned before, the burden is not on the abutters here, but it's on the applicant to establish that they have met the criteria for the issuance of a special permit, which we would respectfully submit that they have not, and we would ask that the request be denied.
Other comments?
Question now or later?
Uh, excuse me. Mr. Kirk, I apologize. Questions for the public?
Will you not, did you not have availability of a full set of plans and specs?
The plans that we've been provided are, they're difficult when we get the copies just by PDF.
What was provided, by email?
Yes.
So you didn't come in to see the full set of plans?
No. So just-
That might have clarified it if you had.
Certainly, if we could have, I guess, seen the numbers in a larger format, but just based on what I'm able to see.
Electronic.
Yes, from the electronic copies. Those appear to be the numbers.
You had said that there was a significant massing. Did you ever do the calculation? I was trying to follow. I don't understand what you define as a significant massing. You masking, you had quoted two feet here, this and that. And I don't like to come down to just arithmetic. I am an engineer. But I don't know whether it's just a qualitative decision or quantitative decision that you've come up with a significant increase of mass.
That is based on the size of the structure. You know, the square footage that's been presented, as well as the height increase, we're submitting that that is substantially increasing the height, but also the mass and the overall bulk of the structure on the lot.
Yeah, I, I, I won't, we might disagree. Uh, you've also defined the neighborhood. You know, we have no definition of neighborhood.
Certainly. Yes.
Questions from this side?
I, I'd just like to add that there, on the copies that we were given, there are no numbers.
Other comments from the public? Mr. Kirk?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Edward Kirk. I'm an attorney in Osterville, and I'm representing Catherine Walsh, who lives at sixteen Crown, right behind the, uh, oh-boy residence. I want to say, first of all, that we do appreciate and acknowledge the changes that have been made by the applicant to, to, to the plans. They are definitely an improvement. Uh, and as I say, that's, that, that is appreciated. And so we're, we're getting down to sort of, uh, uh, the details of, of the project and the impact, on behalf of my client, that the project now as proposed would have. Chris Warner, who's an architect, is here. He's going to show you what the impact would be, for you to decide, uh, between, based on photographs, between the existing, uh, roofline that the Walshes look at, as it now exists, and what it would be if it was raised by eleven inches. And one of the problems that we're still having in, in order to establish some certainty and verification when it comes time to build, is that the current plans, the, they don't, the existing plans presented don't show the height of the existing kitchen structure, so-called. So we don't, we don't have that information. And what we'd like to have is a, a plan that shows what's there now, how high it is, and measured from the same level, what the proposed, uh, structure would look like in terms of height in comparison. Because when the time comes to build, grades can change. And while the permit may be granted on the basis that, okay, it's going to be fourteen-point-eight feet or sixteen-point-two feet or fifteen-point-three feet, which are numbers that have sort of floated around here, I think the board should see them, the, the actual numbers on a plan, existing and proposed. It may not seem like a big difference, you know, eleven inches or a fe- a foot. But to the Walshes, and I think you'll see from the photographs, and maybe you would glean from the photographs that have been presented before, that a foot, one way or another, going up, cutting off a view, is a lot more important to the Walshes, let's say, than it would be to the oh-boys inside, uh, the structure. And with, to, to that, uh, point, I would ask whether or not the suggestion is reasonable to say, can you, can they flatten out that ridge on the, uh, on the existing proposed extension? Does it have to go all the way to a ridge, or can it come to a point and then be flattened off? May, may get us back to square one, where they'd like to be, where their view is not, is not changed. Uh, the, uh, what I'd like to see a- at the end is a condition imposed by the board, if you choose to grant the special permit, uh, that the proposed structure cannot be more than, if it's, if you do si- if you decide that eleven inches is reasonable, would like to have it the same place, but if you decide that eleven inches is reasonable, that, the condition would say that the structure cannot be more than eleven inches higher at the ridge, the new ridge, than the existing height at its existing grade. And that fact would have to be determined, uh, and established and ascertained by the building department before a demolition permit could, could issue. So, uh, that's, that'll be my, my overall comment. Again, appreciate the changes. I think we could do a little better, or at least if we can't, we want to be absolutely sure that the grade doesn't change when it comes time to build and that a permit isn't granted on one set of assumptions and then have those assumptions change when it comes time for construction. So I'd ask, if I may, Mr. Warner, to come up and show us his photographs.
Good evening. My name is Chris Warner. I'm an architect here in Falmouth, and I've been asked to doctor up some photographs. Did I get it in the right place?
There is a problem.
Okay, now I want to get back and show, I'd like to bounce back and tweet forth between existing and proposed. Where is that? How do I get back to there? Through the glass? How do I?
I think you want to go.
Yeah, right in that part.
Right there.
I'll go to the th-.
Oh, no.
Go down there. Okay. Never done this before. Thank you. Okay. And then, there's another one? Okay. So I've got the... This is a picture that I didn't take the other day at sunrise. Uh, it was just sent to me. I don't know the height of whoever took it. Who was that? You? Mrs. Walsh? At her kitchen window, inside. And so, um-
Which is a little bit higher than the, yeah. Which is a bit, a bit lower.
Right. I've, I've got both existing, um, situations. So, that is proposed. And there's, uh, I took out the window, which the plan shows, or the elevation shows. But this is based on an average of a five-inch course of shingles, which is a standard around here. So, this is a Photoshop copy and lift-up, just to show existing and proposed. It's not exactly measured, but it's a little more than two courses. So that's about eleven inches between her water view from her kitchen window, existing, and eleven inches up. Okay?
Could you go back?
And then I want to show also the existing deck view, which is a picture I took, and I'm considerably taller than her. And, um, I didn't catch that it's a hip roof proposed, but the sun angle is probably pretty close to that. And so, here's the existing deck view of the water. And that's approximately eleven inches higher, just a lifting of it. Okay, so, um, again, here's existing and proposed. Okay? I don't know if that's helpful. Uh, I, it-
That? Couldn't you put them both side by side?
Yeah. Now that would be cool. They have like a tiling thing here.
The minus up in the corner there.
Okay.
Oh, the minus.
Oh? Which one?
Yeah, right there. And then, can you put the other one beside it?
Next to it. Does it have a tiling option? Or do I have to have two windows? Just open up a second window again? That's going to be tricky. That's beyond my, um... If you could help, that would have been...
You got to lower that one on the right.
Do you want me to?
To make the evenness.
Is that better for?
Well, if you make the two boards the same, it would be... Uh, it's, it's enough, anyway. It, it shows.
I'm not sure if I'm able to, to drag it down.
Yeah, it's tricky because it's all perspective. I, I think it would be really hard. The only, you know, the best would probably be the, uh, water level. You know, it's, it's pretty close. It's... And she's not as tall as I am, so she would have more obstruction. She was just telling me about, she's been there fifty years, and she watches the sailboat races out there. And there's a high probability she would have to stop watching the sailboat races from her deck. And again, the same thing. The kitchen, existing. And the kitchen proposed, the same thing from her kitchen window. Signif- you know, I don't know how significant is, um, but a change in her water view.
Any questions from the board?
Question from Mr. Kirk. Attorney Kirk.
I'll leave that up.
As an individual, are there any view rights granted in, uh, zoning regulations for Mrs. Walsh? Usually view rights, we consider views from public ways, general view. This is like an individual person versus a neighborhood.
The, uh, I mean, there's, we're not claiming that there's any private property easement. But what we are saying is that the board, in the, uh, in 240(c)(3), uh, (c)(1)(b), uh, when it comes to, uh, in particular, when it comes to alterations of non-conforming structures, that the board may consider whether the new, whether, whether the extension impairs views or vistas. And that's, that's, as I've mentioned in some earlier correspondence, that's a different situation than the overall special permit, which I think deals with views and vistas, uh, in, in general, and how the, the, the scape, if you will, the landscape of the neighborhood is impacted. This, I suggest, relates directly to the views and vistas of, uh, individual landowners, such as Mrs. Walsh. Is that answered?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Here, excuse me. Comments from the public?
I'm Courtney Barber. I live at Sixth Crown Avenue, on the heights, on the circle. If you can, um, imagine the circle being a clock and, um, Catherine's house being twelve o'clock. I'm six o'clock, so I'm on the opposite side of the circle. And I'm probably about two-hundred-plus feet from her deck. And it's kind of interesting. I never thought of this until these pictures were shown. But, uh, from a sec- second-story window in our house, a bedroom, we have the exact same view, except farther away. And so this project will impact our, our view also. Just saying.
More questions? Other public comments?
For the board, my name is Beatrice Banker. I'm also an architect in this town and have to answer a significant amount of work in the historic districts and in the heights. And I would like to make a suggestion that actually the board asked me to do with a former client. And that is, we had to stake out the outline with a couple two-by-fours, strapping whatever, so that the board, the neighbors, the applicant can actually see what it looks like. We, and that was a very simple way that brought ease to a concerned neighbor. It also made the owner realize what they do. And we did modify it because we, I was the one that proposed a, a, a structure. We did modify it because that's the only way that you can really see it. And I know, um, Chris Warner said, you know, he's taller than Mrs. Walsh. This is i- i- the only way for all of you to see what is- This is the only way for all of you to see what is proposed, and is this actually detrimental or not, in the context of this exact neighborhood, and not by individual people living there. And I think the, what the attorney, Billen, brought up about the 50% rule, I mean, that is a simple calculation. Everything that's on the immediate floor below, that is more than seven feet, no, that is seven feet or more than five feet calculates towards that. Anything that's less than five feet does not calculate. So, when the floor plan is shown, certain areas might be appearing that they are usable or habitable space towards that calculation, but it only counts from five feet up. So, just to clarify that. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Hi there. My name's Kelly Carter. My husband and I own the property on 12 Bellevue Ave in the Heights. My property abuts the Zwadas to the east and the O'Boys to the northeast. I'd returned home to Colorado on October 20th meeting, but I wasn't able to watch it online, so I was able to watch all the occurrences. I felt it was necessary to come tonight to ask the board to deny the O'Boys' request for special permit. No one in the Heights is opposed to home improvement. We love that. Our cottage, we've owned, my family owned it, and then my husband and I bought it. We've had it for 44 years. I mean, we have seen the Heights' improvement. It's great. We embrace it. I only want to speak to the opposed addition in the 243C. I'm not in, as I understand it, I'm not a lawyer. In reading this, "Any such extension or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity." I understand the O'Boys have revised their addition, reducing the height by three feet. It looks great, but it's still detrimental. The Walshes still face a wall, the Zwadas still have a wall, and I have a wall. I mean, if you look from 12 Bellevue Ave, if you start to look from that direction, there is going to be a connection between the new property of the O'Boys and also the Daniels, who kind of squish us in. It's a locked-in effect. Shadowing, setbacks, conservation, preservation, those are all words that have been repeated in these hearings. Please recognize what the Heights has right now. Just because things have been allowed before, remember, once this permit's granted, that's gone.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Catherine Walsh, and I am the big abutter to the O'Boys. And my big objection, of course, is the back part of this house, and I would not like to see it raised at all. And I'm sorry, I didn't say good evening to all of you. I know all your names now, when it comes up, but good evening to the board, and thank you for letting us speak. You know that we're a large family of the parents, the kids, the grandchildren, and we're fortunate to have great-grandchildren. We're fortunate to be here, let's put it that way. And this has torn the life out of me, this whole nonsense. I would like to see that back part of their house just, we're talking now 11 inches. We were talking a full building a month ago, two months ago, and back there. Let's just stop it. We have never moved the walls of our house, and we've never had it lifted, so it sits on the same ground it sat on 52 years ago. It's still there. I'm having a hard time speaking tonight, because I'm tied up in this thing. There are zoning regulations, as we've talked about already tonight, and these should not, they should be adhered to. Just leave it alone. It's nonconforming, we all know that, and just leave it alone, and don't intensify it. And please note that we all disobeyed your seven-day rule for getting information in. And I know it's hard, when we were trying to decide what we were going to say, when we didn't know what to say. Because first, they came down to, they wanted three, three-and-a-half feet or under four feet, and now it's down to one foot. And just one foot, I think that we, that there is some way that we can all live with it. And leave the view that's there, leave it there for posterity. I welcome anybody to come up and look at it. Come up on a summer day. And the solar heat that comes in that kitchen every morning is unbelievable. It is beautiful. That kitchen, it's not a beautiful kitchen, but it's beautiful the way the sun comes up there. And that's, that's all I really have to say, and thank you very, very much for the time and effort all of you have spent reading, and reading and trying to help sort this out.
Other public comment?
Good evening, I'm John Walsh. My mom just spoke. I'm a resident of Falmouth as well. I will say, as a start, it is a lovely kitchen, because my mother's in it, so. So, last couple days, last week, there's been a lot of, there's been two sets of changes in the drawings. One was sent to us on November 22nd, one yesterday. And it feels like a mad scramble to take a look at the drawings and understand what they're showing. And I know there was a question about, you know, we could come in and take a look at the drawings. We only got the drawings yesterday, looked at them electronically, you can't see the dimensions at all. And quite frankly, I don't know, given the few dimensions that are on the drawings, and the fact that, I know I can't read them, how can you vote on something that has such little information? So I would think you'd want more dimensions and scalable drawings. And I'll give you an example of a question that I don't know the answer to, but there's a wall there between where the first floor, or the one-story part is, and what will be the three-story part. I can't tell from looking at the drawings online if that wall has moved to the west, or whether it's exactly where it is right now. That's a big deal, because it's not just the height of the peak, but is, has that wall moved over in the drawings? And if we had a full set of drawings, and a couple days to look at them, we could tell whether that's the case. I'm sure the applicant could tell me whether that's the case at the meeting, but that's just one dimension that I think is important. We're opposed to the project in particular, because raising that peak elevation, right where the sun is, but at the very least, we would ask, and I think it's pragmatic, to continue this for another meeting, so that we have a chance to look at drawings that have full dimensions, that are scalable. And also make a point, and I think my mom's attorney made this point as well, once, you can say 11 feet, excuse me, 11 inches above the existing peak, the moment that peak is taken out, the existing one, you don't have that reference point anymore. There needs to be a control, construction control point, that everyone understands, so that you know that proposed peak, or even if the peak is going to, even if you approve it, the peak just where it's at right now, I still think it's the right thing to have a control point, so there's not a dispute in the future of whether or not the peak is where you approve it. Thank you very much.
Other public comment? Turn your head. You still have time to respond to the questions, but it is...
I know, we're getting on to it.
Five minutes into the first hearing of eight this evening. It would be appreciated.
I'll be very quick. So first off, Mr. Kirk mentioned the plan, you know, filing the plan, showing the difference in the height, so I can give that to you. I gave you the illustration that goes to plan from the record. It does show the dimension of the new height, and the difference in the 11 inches for you pretty clearly. The habitable space on the half-story, I did review that with the architect very early on, because I am aware that the half-story can't be more than 50% of the story below, and the architects had looked at that and confirmed that the square footage was in compliance with the zoning bylaw. That would be something that would have to be certified to the building department, and certainly, the board was inclined to condition a special permit to that effect. That wouldn't be an issue. The lot coverage en masse that was raised by Attorney Hall, I just remind you that in my submission of October 7th, I gave you lot coverage en masse calculations for over 40 properties in the neighborhood. 16 of them had larger footprints than this house, and many of them had higher lot coverage. So, I just, I think giving you a list of six or seven is really not accurate, or an accurate depiction of what the situation is. I would urge you to look at that lengthy list that we provided. I've given you photographs of other structures, those are in your file, you know, you can see them when you drive around there. So, you know, the scale and bulk of this structure is not out of line with what else is in that immediate neighborhood. The photographs that Mr. Warner submitted, obviously, we've just seen these tonight, but I would ask, maybe through you, Mr. Chairman, to ask Mr. Warner if he took into account that the pitch of the roof would be lower than the existing pitch, because my understanding is that the roof pitch for this one-story design, in order to get the height down, the roof pitch went to a four-foot pitch?
A four and 12.
Four and 12, as opposed to a six. So, I don't know if Mr. Warner took that into account, yes or no?
Just go up to the microphone and identify from the books of the record, sir. Thank you.
Yes, Chris Warner, again, this is a quick and dirty Photoshop, just raising of the ridge. It really isn't a resloping. It happened very quickly, but it's just to show the top of it, rather than to show the new building. This is just working from the existing photograph, to be clear.
So, perhaps if there's going to be another continuance on this matter, that Mr. Warner might take into account the revised roof pitch in his photographs, because I think that will make a difference in what you're seeing on this comparative analysis. As far as Mr. Kirk's condition imposed by the board, that the roof height not be more than, really should be 11 and 1/8 inch than the existing height, I don't see any issue with that, because that's what we're proposing. Obviously, that would be certified to the building department, there would have to be as-built plans filed, et cetera. So, those are my comments. You know, I guess, this is the third, her third hearing on this, second maybe? Second hearing. So, if the board is inclined to require more information from either the abutters or the applicant, I guess we would have to request a continuance to that effect. If that's going to be the case, I would perhaps ask that there not be any more written legal opinions submitted, because I think we've, you know, beat the horse on that one, and I don't really enjoy having to respond to legal opinions within two days of a hearing, so, you know, and it's prejudicial to the applicant as well, including this material being presented at a hearing. We don't have any opportunity, but other than to continue further and delay further to try and respond to it. So, maybe leave it in your hands.
Want to clarify, are those new plans tonight, or are they the same plans we have in front of us? The ones that you submitted?
It's the plan, it's showing the height of the proposed one-story. We did file the revised plan, showing the new height of the one-story, and that plan is just a copy of what I showed you on the screen, that had the outline of the former ridge. So it's a comparative plan that Mr. Kirk mentioned, and it's now in your record.
How would the board like to proceed?
Maybe a continuance, or just...
Frank, it seems so close. I mean, I do give hats off to all of the attorneys, all of the submittals. The O'Boys have done a great job at coming forward and trying to rectify. I still believe that there is a vista and view impairment, and if there is a way with the architects and the owners and the folks next door, we're so close. I mean, this is, we shouldn't have to kind of split the whole group here up, and not come to a more valuable solution in the end, if at all possible. Maybe with the architect is saying that's impossible, but I do believe the vista and views are impacted here, in this instance. So, if a continuance could help, some additional discussion, engineering, I think that that would be prudent.
I don't disagree a bit, but I just like to add that the seven-day period is for the applicants only, and the purpose of that is in deference to the neighbors. There is no rule that holds them to the same, just so that's clear.
Other than what Mr. Chairman had said at the last meeting, because I specifically asked for that guideline to be established, which it was. Representative parties submit information seven days in advance. That's all, but it's fine. I mean, we, I hear what the board's saying. I think it would be helpful for Mr. Warner to look at that ridge height more carefully, because I have a feeling that maybe those photographs aren't showing what they should be showing with a lower ridge, where you have a broader roof that's actually lower than the existing ridge height. And certainly, you know, although I know the O'Boys don't want to keep going on this, because it's more time and money, but they really do, you know, have been, have been trying very hard to, as you say, Mr. Peterson, close this issue. So, I guess my, you know, my only request would be that we narrow the issue as a group.
Frank? Oh, sorry. Mark, go ahead.
Excuse me, what was your name, ma'am?
Beatrice Bunker.
I'm inclined to think that Ms. Bunker made an excellent suggestion. I mean, we've, was this the fourth time we've been here, third time? I mean, her proposal doesn't seem that difficult, and I think that it really would illustrate exactly what we're dealing with.
It's surprising they essentially stake out or show...
Yeah, I mean, how tough is it to...
Well, one thing I'd say to that is, I think Mrs. Walsh, I think she said she'd be opposed to any increase in height, so that she's still going to be, it might be a minor cost, but I mean, people will have issues on how it was built, and this and that. It may be a simple solution, I don't know if it's going to satisfy Mrs. Walsh, if she's opposed to any increase in height.
Frank, you have a question?
I guess I'm asking the board, not...
No, I don't.
So I think at this point, we can get a continuance.
Yes.
To allow people to review plans. What do we have date-wise, Norrie?
Your next meeting is on eighth, but it's pretty full. I would recommend January 25th.
I'm just trying to get out of standing.
It's only one week away, so it wouldn't really give people time to provide anything further. I would suggest, though, that where there was an issue raised about the half-story, that we request the applicant to confirm that their proposed half-story complies with the two-nameth-story requirement.
It's not unreasonable. It's the eighth, good day for you, counsel.
Pardon me? January 5. January 5th.
I'm sorry.
January 5th.
Yes.
Yes, that should be fine.
So motion to continue to January 5th.
Motion's made at second. Any discussion on the motion?
Can we have the actual square footages, floor space?
Yes.
Because they weren't included here.
Yep.
And they are asked for in the instructions for application.
Yeah, and would it be possible to ask Mr. Warner to review those photos again and make any corrections if the ridge height is not correct?
Certainly.
Based on the pitch. Submittals, thank you.
A motion to continue. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. That is a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Next up on this evening's agenda is hearing 06722, Cushing, 90 Nantucket Avenue, Palmoth, requesting a modification of special permit 9406 to construct a half-story addition, creating additional living space and exceed lot coverage.
He's leaving.
Oh, that's, that's an interesting suggestion.
Sorry, trying to fight my way through the crowd.
Got to do the best you can this evening, counsel.
You did a fine job.
Well, Mr. Clower is getting set up. Are there any new additions into the file?
There were revised plans.
I thought when I came here this week, I didn't see any. This is not revised.
I think that's the original submission. Oh, she said that one is the new one.
That is the new one? Okay. Do we all have a set of the new ones?
You all have a set of the new ones.
The record, yes, we have revised plans.
Yes.
For the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairmembers of the board. For the record, Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in town with Ahmed Clower Law Firm, and I'm here tonight representing David and Wendy Cushing, the owners of 90 Nantucket Avenue, who are the applicants in this matter. Mr. Cushing is here with us this evening. As the board may recall, this is a modification, a request for modification of special permit 94-06 with respect to 243C, 2469E. The Cushings are seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling. A brief recap, 90 Nantucket is located at the eastern end of the Heights, a very dense residential neighborhood in the RC zoning district, and it is located on Town Sewer. Presently, this is a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. The footprint is 1,113 square feet. It's non-conforming to front, rear, and side yard setbacks, as well as lot coverage by structure, which is currently 29.5 percent. The proposed addition is a half-story within the existing footprint, which will serve as a family room and den. There's no impact on existing non-conforming setbacks or lot coverage percentages, or there's no increase, rather. The existing ridge height is 27 feet 8 inches, which will be increased to 33 feet 1 inch, an increase of 5 feet 3 inches, which is below the 35 that's allowed by right. And as noted, we are requesting a modification of that existing special permit. Since the last meeting, we have revised the plans, revised the plot plan to show removal of the storage bins, which were the subject of much discussion at the last hearing, as well as we obtained a determination from the building commissioner that the patio and the walkways are pervious as they are dry-laid and therefore not counted towards the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking. That determination was submitted to the board. We also submitted revised building plans, which corrected an error in those plans, which affected an existing deck. The result of these changes is the proposed lot coverage by structure will be reduced, going from 29.5 percent down to 27.6 percent. Proposed lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking will go from 38.1 percent down to 36.2 percent. Relative to the grounds for the board's decision, under the standards of 243C, there's no new nonconformity created. The existing nonconforming setbacks are unaffected. The nonconforming lot coverage by structure will be reduced, and the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking will remain conforming and below that which was allowed in the 2006 special permit. In this proposal, it's certainly in character with the neighborhood. Under the standards of 2469E, which allows for lot coverage by structures exceeding 20 percent, there is no increase to the lot coverage by structures, but the proposal has no impact on the views and vistas in the public ways, no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. The permitted number of bedrooms on a sewer system is four. There's three currently. This room will technically qualify as a fourth bedroom, though they don't intend to use it as such, but four is allowed by right on the sewer. And as to the size and height of the structure, we submitted a lot comparison worksheet for the nearby properties. As noted, most of those homes are on similar footprints and similar lot sizes. Of the 39 houses within that area, 18 had larger gross floor area and 22 had larger footprints. Even as proposed, this is almost exactly at the meeting of the neighborhood, that comparison shows just how similar. The applicant did have a shadow study completed, which was submitted to the board previously. It shows very minimal impact on the effective shadow. This is a dense neighborhood, and it's only a minor increase in the ridge. The abutter raised a concern about this, but provided no evidence. We have shown little to no effect through that shadow study. This proposal is a minor change to the ridge. It's an increase of only five feet. Though minor, it provides a substantial improvement to the property for the applicants. It will do so in a way that does not negatively impact the neighborhood, has no impact on the existing nonconformities, other than an improvement to the nonconforming lot coverage by structure. It won't create any new dimensional nonconformities, and as shown, the proposal's in character with the neighborhood. There's no adverse effects to this that overbalance the benefits. I believe this meets all the requirements of 243C, 69E, and 216. As I mentioned, Mr. Cushing is here tonight. He'd like to speak to correct some mischaracterizations that have been made to the board. Following his speaking to the board, I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chairman, board, thank you, and good evening. I wasn't here at the first meeting, because I frankly didn't think I need to be, although I didn't anticipate the stiff opposition from my neighbors. And also the same neighbors that opposed it back in 2006, apparently, when we built the house to begin with. I also wasn't here on the second meeting, because after the first meeting, the neighbors came to our house with a coffee cake, presented to my wife, saying that they apologized for opposing us and gave us the impression that they were okay with this. So, but I am here tonight because I have read their emails submitted to the board. I have seen the submittals, and I was, I thought I should come here to defend myself, because I didn't really feel that some of the things they were portraying me as were accurate. And also, there were inconsistencies in what they were resenting about the house itself. They feel that I'm above the law. They say I.
Sir, I'm going to rein this in a little bit. I'm not going to entertain back and forth and derogatory comments about neighbors, sir. So I just ask you to please keep the comments about this particular project or why you feel it's appropriate. Thank you, sir.
Okay, one of the things they mentioned in the project was that we were putting a master bedroom on the third floor, which is totally inaccurate, because they have recreation room. It's always been that way. That's what it's stated on the plans. They mentioned that we enlarged the rear stoop, that it was four by four, and then we changed it a few years ago to a five by six, when in actuality it's four by five, because I was measured it this evening. So that's inaccurate. They submitted, they submitted plans, they submitted actually a picture, it was a Photoshop picture. This is the actual picture of the house. It's a drone picture on my website. They took this picture and they Photoshopped this tower on top of the house that is totally inaccurate as a representation of what this is going to look like. In the submittal, it shows you exactly what the house is going to look like. Nothing like the picture they're going to show you. I think they have a slide for you tonight. They talked about the balcony, how we're going to remove a rear wall, exposing it to the backside, to their backyard, so we can look into their backyard. That is inaccurate. We're not touching that side of the house. It is a old, it was an old design. Actually, it wasn't a design. The designer had mistakenly thought that's what it looked like when she originally drew it. That balcony's not being touched, and it wasn't going to be touched. They mentioned that my house was undesirable and not in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood, when I have pictures of four houses directly in front of my house that are renovated two-story houses, similar in size, and a little bit different style, but I'm not sure why my house is undesirable, but these are fine. The storage bins, we had a six-by-12 trailer after the house was built, and it was a landscape trailer with a big ramp in back. We had that parked there for 12 years, and we had gone to, I had my contract to go to the town and speak to the billing commissioner to get, to see if it was okay to put the storage bins in. And they said as long as we don't attach it to the house, they would be okay with it. And it was under 100 square feet, I believe, it was, it wouldn't require a billing permit. So we went ahead, spent a few thousand dollars, we had them instructed. It's the only storage we have. We have no other storage. That was the whole point of it, for our lawn mower and garden tools, and so we're happy to get rid of it, though. We'll take it out if that's what it's going to take to get this project moving forward. So I think that's about all I have to say. If any questions, I have to answer them, otherwise I'll be finished.
Questions from the board, start with you, Jerry.
No.
All right, this time.
No.
Mark?
If the original permit was for 25 percent lot coverage, which is the maximum, how did we get to 29, and then with the proposed removal, still at 27, which still makes it nonconforming?
So the original plan.
Not complying as well.
So the original plan was approved with 24.95 percent lot coverage, didn't include stoops or steps, which are clearly necessary. Those were added. The lot coverage is being reduced, however, the stoops and steps that were constructed were constructed in 2007 when the house was built, given the passage of 10 years and the fact it was six years, actually, since the building permit. Those are considered legally nonconforming. So the lot coverage, if you, what we're backing out, taking off, we'll be detaching the wrench station and removing the bins, gets us down to 27.5 percent lot coverage. The bins are not grandfathered under the passage of time of more than 10 years. However, every other aspect of the house is, because that's how it was constructed in 2007. But 24.95 percent, I don't know why it was approved, because it didn't include stoops or steps.
And, I mean, the back stoop is really not necessary, because you already have two means of egress. That's a third. I just have a hard time finding how you can get a permit for 24.95 and exceed it.
It's legally nonconforming. So at the lot coverage will be at 27.5 percent, that is a legal nonconforming lot coverage.
Anything else, Mark?
The stoop is brought up in the decision for 2006.
It was, but the plan that shows 24.95 percent doesn't show stoops or steps.
It says the stoop shall be no larger than four by four.
Understood, but again.
Larger than four by four.
But it was built in 2007.
It's no larger than the decision says.
But the law is clear that if something constructed pursuant to a building permit is valid after six years, something constructed without the benefit of a building permit becomes legally nonconforming after 10 years. That's Mass General Law, Chapter 48.
How, if the building permit says four by four?
We're still, we're 15 years. It's a legal nonconformity.
Everything we wish would be a lot easier for the board to get through, going up the additional five feet, as we talked about Attorney Clower in the last meeting that we had. I guess I still struggle with a neighbor who is sitting there saying, we already have some height issues, and to say that it's only another five feet for them, I think, is dramatically detrimental to what they have. Is there any way that the applicant can go back and try and re-engineer what's available here? Or is this it? You're going up five feet?
So it's a relatively small footprint.
I agree.
And there's not much way to move sort of forward, back, left, or right while maintaining it at a half-story. So I understand the neighbor's concerns, but empirically, through a shadow study, we've shown that this doesn't, this isn't going to impact them any more than the existing structure does.
I guess, the shadow study did show that there was some impact, right? And I'm not, you know, I'm not an architect. I only went to Mass Maritime, but thinking you're going to go up five more feet, I got to believe there's additional shadowing, and whether it's a day or a month, I struggle with that.
So on the shadow study, what's shown in gray is existing shadows, what's shown in blue is new shadows.
Agreed.
So what we're seeing here is this is the existing house. This is the existing neighbor's house. This is the applicant's house. So you'll see where we have increases in shadows, it doesn't impact the neighbor.
I guess I would need a little more clarification. That wasn't my understanding when we chatted about it.
So the, so this was prepared by our architect. As shown in the legend, the gray shadow, this is shown, you know, three different dates. They pick summer solstice, winter solstice, spring equinox, at different times of day. The shadow shown in gray is existing shadows cast by the existing home. The area shown in blue, here, 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 right here, there'll be a very minor increase in shadow. Other than that, this isn't going to impact the neighbor with any increased shadowing beyond what exists today.
Other board questions?
I drove by at a couple of different hours of the day, and the shadow was quite visible on the roof of the neighbor's property. I'm sorry, I don't, I forgot your name.
Yes.
And it's readily discernible that a minimum amount of sunlight hits the south side of their house as it is, and the increase in height, now, what did you say the last time? You have sun coming through one window?
Yes.
And that's towards the front of the house, right? Towards the Legion Avenue? And I fail to see how it's not going to impact them, as well as, again, going back to this Duca's decision.
I'm sorry, what decision, Mr. Finer?
This Duca, whatever, it's from the old boys, which are free to read through it. There's a lot of things that.
I have no idea what this decision is. It's not part of the application.
No, but it's a judge's decision that gives us instruction on how to apply the law.
It's a case I've never read, and I don't think it's entirely appropriate to introduce it.
At this point, the board's decision should be, based on 24216, I think that the question or the concerns Mr. Finer has are still valid, without applying the steady particular case he's referenced.
Let me just go forward, if I can. Something that I didn't know is basically the yard setbacks are, kind of the rule of thumb is, they'll be one-quarter the height of the building. You have a very minimal setback as it is. There's just no way it's not going to affect them in a negative way, and it's also. There's just no way it's not going to affect them in a negative way, and it's also an extension of a nonconformity.
It's an alteration to a nonconformity.
An extension as well.
Which is allowed by special permit, which can be allowed by special permit.
Can be.
I would say, it's clear there is shadowing on the neighbor's property. No one's disputing that. But this change doesn't increase that.
Other board questions?
Public comment.
Sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and zoning board of appeal members. Before I go, I want to clarify one thing, okay? There is an occupancy permit that was granted at the time in 2007, okay? And in that occupancy permit, it said that the, it says demolition and reconstruction of single contemporary-style home with three bedrooms, two full bathrooms, no garage, no deck, one porch. So, I'm not sure if what I had said in the emails that I sent forward is incorrect. Second of all, there was a building permit that was also issued in 2019. And in the building permit, it clearly states in the permit that the applicant is requesting to remove existing decking to front porch and side deck and rear deck. All of a sudden, there's a rear deck. And it says, "No change to porch size, only material change only." And it says that the dimensions of the rear deck are five by six. That was the only data that I had to go by, and that was the information that I was referring to. As far as a cake, my wife loves to bake cakes, and we want to be friendly with our neighbors. And we don't feel that, we are in strong opposition to this second-story addition, or third-story addition, or half-story addition, whatever they want to call it. It's going to provide lack of sunlight coming into our house, and I'm just going to go short in version, that we are elderly people, my wife and I, we're in our late 70s, I'm approaching 80. Natural state light coming into your house is an important health condition. That will be totally eliminated with this addition. That's all we have to say. And my wife has some things she would like to say at this time, too.
Clarify that cake situation. Do you remember when I was here and I actually walked over to you and you said, "Please get back over here," because I was getting into Mom and Dad and how they were always so friendly and how I hated that this had gotten so big? And I felt so bad, feeling the way I did at the time, because I felt that I needed to apologize to Wendy. I couldn't even tell Wendy why I was bringing the cake over. She says, "Well, why are you bringing it?" I said, "I just need to know. I just need to apologize." And I didn't want to tell her that I was embarrassed because I did that to you guys. No, now, you're not supposed to do that. So, just so he knows, there's no malice in anything that we do. And I know you're going to hold it against us, because I can see your face. But I'm telling you that we live like on a pie lot. It's like, we live in a pie-shaped neighborhood. And there are seven houses on that pie shape. And there are five of them that are all flat, level homes. They're just one-story, just the way it always was. And there are two houses that have, that have double story, all right, have a second floor. And they're on both sides of us. Now, my husband looked into this, and I just want to tell you, he found a copy of the blueprints that when his, when actually Dave's mother and father lived there, and there was 17 feet between our houses, and it was a one-level, like Wes said, 17 feet. We are at nine and a half now. We've got nine and a half feet, and instead of going on the way the land went, he went straight all the way down to the end of our property, which makes it even thinner. I'm not saying it's right. We weren't going to complain. But I never knew how fast, how close they were to the line. They could have put the house out further by the road if they wanted to enlarge it and give more room to their neighbor, but that didn't happen. I would never complain about it. But when I want to know that a third story is going to be put up, I will, because it's not right. And every window on that side, if you line it up, there are two windows that are in by our living room. That's their kitchen sink. So, if I've got TV on and I'm sitting there and I don't close the shade, there they are. I mean, I'm not saying that they do. My bedroom, the bedroom, the door to coming out of his house is right in front of us, and he can see as clear as day. Sure, he don't want to look, but the fact remains is that could have been totally changed so that we didn't have to put up with that. And yes, that makes me angry that he'd think that we want to conceivably do all these things to be neat, because we're not. We have been good neighbors.
Ma'am, please direct your comments at the board, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. All right, I'm just going to say this out, and you guys can listen, and then you make your choices, because I've really now gotten myself worked up. I just can't wrap my head around something that's this obvious to the eye. Come to 4 Elysian Ave and look at our home, and then look at 9 Nantucket Ave. From 1984, when we bought our home, until 2006, prior to the new large home that was built, we had sunlight coming in our windows. Now, after the 2006 construction was, which was built, despite our objections, we no longer have light in our bedroom side window, and we now need to close the shades in order to protect our privacy, as their back door lines up with our window. We've already shown you the shrubs that I put up. They have to come down in the fall, because then they grow better. So, now, that's the pictures you saw. We have been left with just a peak of sunlight in our living room window, and the one that's furthest from the road, we will not see the sky at all. You've already pictured that. It literally feels like living in a city, not a quaint seaside neighborhood. That's what's going to happen. When the new permit was submitted to the town for a third-story addition, there were many violations that were discovered by the town. The applicant is now seeking forgiveness for those violations and then wants approval for a nonconforming addition, which is not aesthetically pleasing and does not fit the neighborhood, and, as mentioned above, will also eliminate light. On the original plans that were submitted, there was a modification to the second story. Now, I had it. My husband never, all of a sudden, he looked at all the plans, he came down, he did his diligence, because you say that that's what we have to do to defend ourselves. And that was also marked, that he was going to take that wall down. He was going to take the second-story deck that has view of Little Pond and has a solid wall on the side of the house that faces our backyard in the plans. Oh, God, so nervous. The applicant was seeking to eliminate the wall that faces our backyard and install a railing. This would have made it so that there would be a full view of ours and our neighbors' backyards, including our outdoor shower. This has now been changed on the plans to remain a solid wall. It should have been taken down if they didn't want it to be known before now. But I bring it up as an example of disregard that the applicant has for the neighbors around him. Since the larger home was built in 2006, we've had to learn to live with changes that came with being next to the significant larger structure. As mentioned, we have less light and privacy.
Ma'am, may I inquire how much more time you're going to require? Your comments are getting a little repetitive.
About one minute.
Certainly. Go right ahead, though. Thank you.
Okay. The changes we are finally appoint, or apiece with, there has been clearly a lack of respect, not only for the town's regulations, but also for the surrounding neighbors. The neighborhood lots are small, so we are very close to one another. We understand that other third-story additions have been approved on a case-by-case basis. So, we hope that with the information provided, you will see that this addition is in conflict with the other homes and also negatively affects the quaint feeling of our neighborhood. It saddens my husband and I that things have come to this point such as this, that neighbors no longer look out for each other. I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am. Other public comment? Mr. Clower, would you like to address any of the concerns raised briefly?
I certainly understand what the Melowiches are saying, but I believe their complaints stem from the 2006 reconstruction of this house. The proposal before you today isn't going to impact, isn't going to impact, impact the shadow on their property, it's not going to impact the light on their property. It's a modest addition that's going to have a significant reward for the applicant. The house is, as we discussed, the lot coverage is legally nonconforming. We are reducing it down to 27.5%. Removing the storage bins, which were the source of much consternation. Relative to the deck that was referenced, that was a mistake in the plans. It was pointed out that when the designer was drawing both the existing and proposed house, that's how she thought that deck was. Once it was pointed out, it was fixed, and those plans were submitted. I think that this is, as I said, a rather modest addition, and it meets the criteria set forth in the bylaw.
Follow-up questions from the board? How would the board like to proceed?
If I could request that the discussion happened before the close of the hearing, that way I can discuss with my client, depending on where the board stands.
Discussion. Who would like to start?
I can start. I think someone mentioned before, it's sort of like, this is the second bite of the apple. A lot of the things there now are legal, because they've been there for six or 10 years. In some respects, you could say that's legally corrected. Sort of unfortunate that enforcement wasn't taken before this hand. So, I guess, you know, despite testimony of the neighbor, the shadow study seems to contradict their own viewpoint, and I don't have a way, both of them. Obviously, they're there so they know if they're getting less light or more light, rather than a mechanical study. But I guess I'm still on the fence.
Frank, your feelings?
I didn't participate in this originally, and I haven't done a site visit, so I'm not going to participate in this.
Very well. Mark?
I disagree that the shadow won't have an effect on their dwelling. I was there, and I witnessed the actual shadow raising that roof up a height. And if you go back and if you point out their house in the blue, you know, it shows on the shadow. And I, they already went over their lot coverage, and I see this as an extension of the nonconformity.
Suzanne?
I struggle with the fact that they didn't stick with the 24.9 that the town allowed them to have. They exceeded it. They weren't caught, like Jerry said. And now time has run out. Still doesn't make it right in my mind. I don't know if they can try to do it again. And that, I struggle with that.
Scott?
I'm still just hung up on the shadow. I guess to echo Jerry's, there's no real look back here. So, again, I don't know if it's a second opinion on the shadow from another independent. I'm not trying to have the applicant spend, you know, inexorbitant amount of money, if that's possible. As Mark said, he was there today, and he saw the shadowing. If I could see a second opinion that the shadowing won't affect their, their current condition, then I feel a lot differently than I quite honestly would. And it's not to demean your architect and their shadow study. I mean, some of this is still evolving, quite honestly, and my level of understanding is still evolving. But if we could get potentially a second opinion on that, and if it comes up that the second opinion states that there is no effect on the neighbors, then I'm looking at this much differently.
Okay.
That helps.
So, my concern is, what I described, I think the last hearing is, the slow creep. My concern now is that we're in excess of what is allowable by special permit, although by the testimony, I'll accept it as grandfathered. But the bulk is now increasing. So, I think in terms of suitability, based on the lot size, beautiful home, architecturally, it's well-designed, but my concern is too much use on this particular lot, given the objections of the neighbors. That's kind of where I am at this point, given their testimony about their concern about shadow and so on. So, I'll echo some of the concerns that Scott has, but that's kind of where I am. Would you like a moment with your client, Mr. Clower?
I would love a moment with my client.
Please take your time. While Mr. Clower is conferring, why don't we take a five-minute break, just to keep things moving along? I know that we're certainly running a little later than usual, so we will re-adjourn at the sound of the next gavel. the sound of the next gavel. While Mr. Clower is conferring, why don't we take a five-minute break, just to keep things moving along? I know that we're certainly running a little later than usual, so we will re-adjourn at the sound of the next gavel.
Um, I'm still hung up on the January 1st, 1980. And I went through the code and there's, there's a number of dates specific. One everybody knows, easy for me to remember because of the day before I was born. But the May 19th, 1959, for the two dwellings and a lot. And then the amnesty of January 1st, 1994. And then this one, the existing structure as it existed in, in 1980. And I saw really no wiggle room. Um, and you know, I, I certainly struggled to accept a, a walk through 38 years later as complying with this specific date of January 1st, 1980. And then again, um, I see no logic to someone marketing a house as a six bedroom when in fact it had 10. It just doesn't jive with me. And then I don't want to throw something else into it, but I'm going to. Um, under, uh, excuse me, just give me a second. Under, now this was an in as in its past history. Um, and under dwelling, um, it excludes commercial accommodations, um, you know, which would have been a few of those bedrooms. So I, I, I certainly can't go with the 10. The most hard, fast evidence we have is the six. And the six is on the property card. But as we know, that's not admissible in court anyhow. I'm not saying that it's not admissible here. Um, I, I struggle with this.
Frank?
No.
Jerry?
Uh, I think in the past, the health department has clearly defined space as bedrooms. And we've either required people to upgrade their septic tanks because as Mr. Clower said, the space fit the definition of a bedroom even when they proposed to use it as a recreational room. So I could see the bedroom count. It'd be great if people would agree with the eight bedrooms and be done with it because it's going to be expensive to appeal this for all three parties.
Thank you, Tony Petrucci, 243 Old Main Road, Director Butter. If the applicant can demonstrate that pre-existing bedrooms are determined within the zoning bylaw by Title V, then do so. But that's not how pre-existing bedrooms have been defined. Uh, or maybe they've been defined that way in the past and we argued that, well, that may not be appropriate. So if pre-existing bedrooms are defined by Title V and that's what's in the zoning bylaw, then maybe that's what's going to bring this to 10. As far as accepting seven or eight, we've not been approached by the applicant to do that. And if the applicant would like to do that, I think we should have an open mind and listen to the applicant. So we would do that. Thank, thank you.
Do I have a question? I think you're probably as knowledgeable as most people. You're saying that the Board of Health is not the sole determination of bedrooms in Falmouth Code?
No, I did not say that.
What did you say then?
What I'm saying is within this confined of this board, we have to go by the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw does not have anything within it that defines bedrooms by Title V. It says pre-existing as of January 1st, 1980. We've proven in many ways that pre-existing bedrooms existed and they were six. All right? So no, you can use Title V, but for a brand new house, absolutely, or if you want to expand.
I think our bylaw, and I could be wrong, plenty of attorneys here, require us to comply with Board of Health determinations as opposed to bedrooms. Whether we agree with the Board of Health or not, it's implicit that we, it's probably there someplace that we follow the Board of Health definition of bedroom. And whether it's pre-existing or now, no one's going back to the definition of bedroom in 2010 or something like that. It's what we have.
I'm certainly not in a position to argue with you and I won't.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
One more question before you leave?
I'm sorry.
And again, just in the, in the thought process of compromise. So i- if, for instance, the applicant came back and if we have a continuance this evening, you believe that you might be acceptable to eight bedrooms? Is that true?
I believe that, I believe if the applicant came to us and discussed this with us, we would be open-minded to that, yes.
Thank you.
Other comments from the public?
I just, um, is it not possible that we'd be opening up a can of worms here? Because there was no Title V system in this house previously. So is that going to allow someone to install a septic system and then determine what number of bedrooms they have according to the septic system? It seems a bit of a slippery slope. And I mean, nowhere does it say that the Board of Health overrides the zoning bylaws. You may, and I believe that somebody might be quite successful if they were to amend this bylaw. I've amended a zoning bylaw by myself a few years ago and I had absolutely no experience. But we're still mandated to go by what's written in the bylaws. And it's a hard and fast state.
I don't disagree with you, Mark. I think that this particular provision needs to be tightened up to at least define what a definition of a bedroom was at that point. In the absence, I think that we have some degree of flexibility to interpret as to what a bedroom is. And I think if voted on, we would have to make a finding specifically about how we came to that conclusion or did not come to that conclusion.
A well-thought-out and worded finding because we are opening up. If we go in this direction, I'm just, you know, I can see it. And I think that all of you might attest that that could be quite accurate.
I think some discussion on the application is in order just to get a sense of where we're going. Start with you, Jerry.
I would like to see a continuation and an ability to compromise. So continuation rather than a denial would my vote tonight.
Okay. Frank, do you want to weigh in at all or not?
Well, I did not participate in this, this case originally, although I have visited the site and I have looked at the matters on file. But I think if there can be some kind of an agreement or compromise here by the parties, it would be preferable because the issues that Mark has raised and Jerry has raised about bedrooms and so forth, it's going to be very difficult to, for us to decide.
Anything else, Mark?
Yeah, I might even get town council to weigh in on this one. Just because, as I said, we might be opening up a can of worms.
I don't disagree. Uh, my feelings on this kind of echo, I think with Frank's, uh, compromise with the neighbors or objecting parties is always preferable, makes our decision maybe a little easier. I'll also add that if the bedroom count was reduced based on my review of the plans, that's putting these units as all two-bedroom, which is in line with the town's housing production plan, which is compelling.
I'm agreed with Mr. Duffy.
And that may potentially free up some other housing for someone else in town moving from where they are.
Scott?
I think Attorney Clower's heard all our comments and hopefully they can have some discussions with your Butters and it can be a little more fruitful and we can move forward.
It sounds like a continuance.
Yeah, we've had, you know, we've had a pretty open line of communication with, with Mr. Petrucci and Priscilla. And I know her better, so I'll call her by her first name. But we've had a pretty open line of communication. We're happy to speak with them. Um, you know, there is a timing component to this because we've been at this for a while and, and, and I know that next week is the last meeting for December. So what would we be looking at for a continuance date? What's the soonest date in January?
January 5th.
Okay. Uh, I, I mean, it's not going to be next week, so I guess that's our best option if we can, if we can secure a January 5th continuance date. And then hopefully get this over the hump.
Someone like to make a motion?
Motion for January 5th.
Just a second.
Second?
Just a second, my Scott. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Close? Unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you very much.
Hey Kevin, while you were talking to Mr. Petrucci, why don't you convince him to put in an application for the ZVA?
Uh, we'll wait on that one. We'll, we'll, we'll hold off on that one.
Hold after the vote.
Next on the agenda, here are--
I got all my projects in North Falmouth again.
08422 Gray, 22 Caravelle Drive East, Falmouth requesting a special permit to construct a 30 by 40 garage for agricultural use. I believe we've had a submission of updated plans delineating certain water boundaries, water protection.
Good evening. Michael Gray, 22 Caravelle Drive. As you can see, I submitted the new plans from the engineer. The garage does not fall into the zone two where you guys were worried about. We also put the drywall on plans. We also staked everything last Wednesday. I don't know if you made it back out or not, but everything was staked. So I'm hoping that I've, you know, answered most of your questions. And as far as the agricultural use, I do understand that the building as of right now doesn't look like a horse barn. Financially right now, this is a start for me. It's, I have a lot of work still to get to that point to be able to bring the horse there. But what I can afford right now is this building and that's my start.
Are you going to be putting some water down there so your horse can drink?
I have a house that's about 25 feet and I can run a horse. This is how I'm looking at it right now. I water the grass to the backside of the garage now as it is.
So you're not pouring a concrete floor in there?
There will be, but only in the front half.
Yeah. My friend has horses. I'm familiar with concrete horses.
Okay.
Jerry, any follow-up questions?
No follow-up, thank you.
Frank?
Well, I have a, perhaps a suggestion. The application made no mention that there'd be use of this structure as a stable. In fact, it came up for the first time at the public hearing last night. Now, not last night, but the last time we were here. The referral to the Board of Health did not inform them that there would be this use of the property. We have stable regulations in Falmouth and they're subject to the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. I would ask the Board to resubmit a referral to the Board of Health with this information and find out what they have to say.
I do plan on pulling another permit when I have the money to do the inside of the building.
I understand you're going to do that, but I think our job is to get the referral from these boards based upon the correct information and they didn't have it. So that's my suggestion.
Mark?
Can we make that a condition and expedite this or is?
I think we could unless the Board would have some significant issues with the plan looking at the file. That's the only, I don't like kicking things down the road where they can be conditioned. Frank, would you be satisfied with a condition or would you?
I'm not sure a condition really works because I don't know what they're going to say.
Good point.
Suzanne?
Mr. Duffy again.
Your other option would be to condition, subject to approval by the Board of Health?
No, it wouldn't work. I don't think we have a right to do that. We have to make the decision here.
Because the application was for agricultural use.
Yes, but that means nothing to me. I mean, you could be growing broccoli in there by, with lights.
By all means, turn your way in.
I don't represent the applicant, but I was here for his last hearing and I have sympathy for him. Maybe you could condition the permit that there be no horse stabiling until such time as the Board of Health has reviewed it and the Board of Appeals has reviewed it as well, if he would agree to that.
Okay. He'd have to come back and watch. At least he can get--
Thank you.
Again, I don't know what the Board of Health is going to say. I mean, they may have in their mind what an ideal or what an appropriate stable is and I just don't know.
Um, I mean, many steel buildings are used for barns and such. I don't see how the Board of, and I could be wrong, I'm not--
The company that is building this building specializes in horse barns that are built right out of the same building.
And I, I have seen them. I mean, you know, so I just wonder what input the Board of Health is going to have on actual construction. I know they're going to have plenty of input on the agricultural and, and then, but then would we have to condition it to those things that are determined?
I think, Mike, we don't know what we don't know. So Mike, I would agree with Frank at this point that--
Yeah, I just think you're right.
And I hate to have somebody come back a third time, but I think that a submittal to the Board of Health is probably the best idea just to get them to weigh in. I'll say for the record, I, other than that, I have no opposition to this.
Yeah, I think when we get the referral from the Board of Health, we can probably decide this in five minutes.
Yes.
But I would, I will not feel comfortable until we have--
And we got the eighth next? We could certainly shoehorn five minutes in because that means we'll get out at five past 12 instead of midnight.
Hopefully not that late.
Would be the best thing for Mr. Gray because he is on a schedule. That's meant to be our concern, but I do feel for him.
Can we get one more in the eighth, Norine?
Yes.
All right. I think at this point, we're looking at one more continuance just for a referral to the Board of Health, making sure that based on your application, they don't have any specific conditions or issues.
No, I don't have any plans or, you know, set in stone plans for the interior of this structure yet. I couldn't financially afford to do that, so that's why I'm starting at this point.
Well, it would be conditioned on what they have. I mean, it, you know, it at least allow you to go forward with the structure. And then we'd have to condition according to what the Board of Health says.
Okay.
I mean, I would go there tomorrow morning if I were you. And, you know, we should be able to get this done, I would think.
Procedurally, Norine, is this a referral that the applicant's going to make or that it's going to come from the Board?
We can initiate.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the right information gets communicated so that we're not a month from now saying, well, we need another-- I just want to make sure we get everything that we need so that this gentleman doesn't have to come back unnecessarily.
I mean, your other possibility would condition no stabiling until, you know, Board of Health, et cetera, is weighed, weighed in.
Let's, let's make the referral to the Board of Health just to get the info that we think we need so that we can get this guy moving forward and the Board is satisfied that we have sufficient information. So I think we're, you said January 8th?
Uh, no, December.
December 8th. What is the date again, please?
December 8th.
Today. It's the first.
Christmas strike too.
So a week. Okay. I do. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Continue to December 8th.
Motion by Jerry, it's her a second. Second to Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, closed. Continue. Thank you for your patience tonight, sir. That concludes continuations. Next up, we have new hearings. First this evening is hearing 90-22, couple of the 63 Glen Avenue, North Falmouth requesting a special permit to allow renovations to include additions to the first floor, the second floor addition, increasing lot coverage by structures.
All right, let's see. Lot of folders. We have Christopher Appaletti.
Yeah, hello. Good evening.
Sir, we have to read a few things into the record first.
Oh, sorry.
29 Front Street, Natick, Mass. Applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-3C, 240-690, the Code of Falmouth, to allow renovations to include additions to the first floor and, and second floor addition, increasing lot coverage by structures on subject property 63 Glen Avenue, North Falmouth. And we have-- We have no comment from planning. No comment. You already have a one-inch service from water. We have health, revised health. We have no comment from fire. No comment from conservation. And engineering. We have, "The application was, it was reviewed by the engineering for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Glen Avenue is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes to the right of way will require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alternations, alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. This project must not direct any stormwater runoff to the public property of Butters or public rights of way. Drywells are proposed for the roof as we typically recommend. Where this is a small site with work in close proximity to Butters and the right of way, we requested erosion and sediment controls, including a construction entrance, are included for this project to, to the adjacent properties. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion, sediment controls and, and construction entrance. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil, erosion, and sediment-controlled standard conditions. The document can be found on the Engineering Division page of the town's website. References to the town, to the Department of Public Work Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning Board of Appeals. Who will be the permitting authority?" That was engineering. No comment here. I think that's all I have. Let me check this. We have two letters in office-- no, no, wrong one, wrong one. No, I think that's all we have.
For the applicant, good evening, sir.
Good evening. So yeah, so I'm currently living, own 63 Glen Ave. It's a tight lot, 54, about 5,400 square feet. The house as it is, is pretty cramped, around 8, 900 square feet. So we're looking to bump out the, the front and add a second floor. Still maintaining the three bedrooms and the front addition, just built on helical piers. The basement footprint stays the same. Unfortunately, I'm trying to open this file and it's not letting me open it. Is there a way to access like the, the public plans?
Yeah, click on it.
It's clicking and then it says it's error. But I just opened it at home. See, it says we can't open this file.
Are we refreshing it?
I did. Is there another way to pull up the documents or I have the hard copies?
We've got hard copies as well. We have to open up the plans.
Try maxing that up to full size and see what happens.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And then, you know, I had some pictures of the existing homes in the area as well. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ash. Thanks, Senator.
All right, so should we start? Here is the existing structure. It's just a one-floor ranch. Proposed basement, just finished storage. Proposed first floor, we're just kind of open things up and there's a, there's not much way to go here, but the six-foot addition in the front is still within the zoning setbacks. The second floor, the kitchen is cantilevered out. Here's the front facade, kind of in keeping with the Cape Cod style here in the neighborhood. Left and right elevations, rear elevation. Just a cross-section. And I'll go back to the, let's go to the site plan. The site plan, if you can see on, on the locust map, you know, this side of, this is Glen Ave and then this is Weston Road. But the lots kind of got, Weston Road got the, the lion's share of the, of the lots here. So I mean, you know, granted, we're going on a second floor. The backyard of the neighbor on Weston Road is substantially, you know, set back. And I can show you some pictures on the flash drive of some of the existing homes. So and then we, you know, I met, uh, adequately suffice the referrals from the Board of Health and the engineering, any concerns they had. Ground infiltration with the drywells, erosion control. There's no excavation. You know, we did the erosion control, site entrance. Get back to the flash drive. Yeah, this is, oh, this is the neighbor's house and you can see how much more forward their house is. You know, 63 Glen Ave is to the left of that, the little white spot, you can't really see it here, but the house is set back. So I think coming six feet forward is doable. This is the neighbor's house. These are just some, they drive around, the houses in the area, you know, within walking distance. I didn't get addresses, but this is right behind, right behind me on, on Weston Road. Two-story Colonial, two-story, second floors. So, let's get out of those. So, so I think it's in keeping with the neighborhood and welcome to answer any questions.
Questions from the Board, let's start with you, Scott.
Could you go back to the site plan and it's just from a process perspective? So I got it right. There was mention that the Title V will be, needed to be upgraded at some point, so you needed to show a reserve area. Is that what you're showing in the portion? If you're going up from the Glen Avenue stamp towards the main, towards the front door, there's a, like a, looks to be three circles, but it's not delineated. Is that the reserve area?
No, no, it's stated right on the conceptual septic upgrade plan, right above that, the green.
Say that again, sorry.
It's, can you see the cursor? Yeah, here it is, here.
Oh, sorry. Hold on. Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
Good. No, I think it's a, it's a good use, good change. And you are going right up to the maximum of 25%, correct?
It is. I mean, they include all the, like, as you know, the stairs, the deck and, and, you know, one option to minimize that was to get rid of the deck. My wife likes the deck, so there's the deck.
No, no. Not what I'm saying. Just, just, we want to make sure you don't go over the 25%.
Yeah, no, it's at, it's at 25.
That's all I have. Thank you.
For the record, there was a follow-up email from the health agent regarding reserve area on the septic, saying that he was satisfied that there'd be sufficient area at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have no questions.
Mark?
I mean, you showed us some pictures from streets over. This certainly will be the largest house on that part of Glen Ave and quite tall, but it will certainly dwarf the other houses, but--
They kind of scaled it down with that front dormer.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the height of the roof is, is--
Yeah.
Like I said, compared to the other houses in the neighborhood, I mean, it's, it's a consideration we're supposed to take. What's the height on that?
Uh, 28. And that's what typical, eight feet first floor, eight feet second floor.
No living space intended in the attic?
No. No, we're just, there's going to be loft areas for the kids. I don't know, it's hard to see here, but there's going to be little loft areas.
Oh, there's actually a loft in the third floor?
No, part of like the second floor bedroom. You know, you see those with little railing, you know. you know.
Oh, so you see down to the first?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just super cramped right now, you know, we, we tried one summer with it, but it's...
Oh, I hear you.
Frank?
Well, this is a very tight situation up there. It's a very small lot and I think the second floor is really the only sensible thing they can do to make this a livable property. As Mark has pointed out, there's two-story houses, but they're scattered throughout the neighborhood. The immediate neighborhood seems to have a preponderance of single, of single-story houses, but nevertheless, I feel this is, in the whole neighborhood, appropriate.
Jerry?
A procedural question. A lot of the existing condition plans, they're not stamped, uh, they look like they were professionally done, done by AutoCAD or something like that. Is that acceptable?
They don't have to be done professionally for a single-family dwelling. I asked a question of the zoning administrator, and it's ultimately the building department. If the building inspector is not satisfied, the plans are specific enough, will require them to be, or could require them to be, come from an architect.
You're a contractor anyway, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm a contractor designer, so, a two-hour drive home.
I have no questions or comments. Public comment? Seeing none. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close?
Motion to close. May I, Suzanne, is there a second?
Second.
Scott, all those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, that is unanimous vote. How would the board like to proceed with this application?
Quick discussion, I guess.
Real discussion, by all means.
No, I think, I think it's a good use, as Frank outlined. I think it's inappropriate, as, as I drove by, like you say, you're maxing out that site, so, you know, just make sure we don't go over and build the deck a little bit larger than you should have, but outside of that, I think it's a good application.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I agree. When I drove around, that street behind him is all two stories. Practically, I think there was one. It is one of the first ones on Glen itself, but it fits in.
Much smaller lots, but...
Yeah.
Martin?
Um, the, the height kind of bothers me in relation to the rest of the neighborhood, but, you know, he's got kids.
Anything other, anything else, Frank?
No, I'm, I'm okay with it, with my comments, previous comments.
Jerry?
No comment.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Close the hearing first.
We did close. Great discussion. The motion to approve, Scott's second, Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Findings?
Findings, I have it in the 243C, 24069E. It's in the Wild Harbor overlay, not in a flood zone. It did have a previous special permit in two thousand. Lot size is fifty-four thirty-four. It's on a public right-of-way. Existing is twenty-one point two and total is twenty-nine point seven. Proposed is twenty-five and total is thirty-three point four-nine. It's, when I looked at the plans, it, everything is as of right. There's nothing on my term, nothing out of order. The height he just indicated was twenty-eight and no letters of opposition. And that's all I have.
So, yeah, just 243C, 24069E.
Three bedrooms.
I mean, three bedrooms. Bulk calculation was submitted. Conditions, any other findings? Conditions?
For plans?
As they're tickling the maximum, so to speak, would we ask for, as both of the...
Frank? Yep.
Okay. I think I might be prudent.
Office to have a cased entrance, based on the plans. Bedroom count to remain at three. Incorporate the various comments from the boards, standard hours of work. Since this is a small lot in a neighborhood of small lots, applicants either keep materials on-site or work with the police department to find something suitable.
And we condition no living space on the third floor?
Absolutely.
What was that?
No living, no having space on the third floor, living space. Other conditions?
Hours of all?
Got that, yep.
So, you'll be precluded from any further expansion on the lot, including installation of sheds or any type of structures?
Yeah, no, no sheds or outdoor living storage.
Because you're maximizing your lot.
Okay.
Can we condition that?
This is going to be conditioned.
No sheds, right?
No sheds, nothing, nothing else, because you're at twenty-five percent. Any other conditions?
I think that's it.
All right. I believe that was approved. Take the vote again, all those in favor of approval.
Aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have hearing nine-one-dash-two-two, Barksdale, seventy-one Philadelphia Street, T-Ticket, requesting a special permit to remove a portion of the existing deck and construct a second-story addition to the non-conforming, single-family dwelling.
All right, I have Patricia Barksdale, seventy-one Philadelphia Street, T-Ticket, applied to the zoning vote of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-dash-3C and 24069E, the Code of Falmouth, to remove a portion of the existing deck and construct a second-story addition to the non-conforming, single-family dwelling on subject property known as seventy-one Philadelphia.
Mr. Chair, can I actually ask that it be taken out of order, because apparently my files didn't upload? I'd like to run back to my office and put them on a merry stick.
Sure.
Not a problem.
How fast can you run?
Quickly, but why don't you take Spears out of order? If you don't mind, if the board doesn't mind.
I'll do that by unanimous consent of the board?
Yes.
Yes.
So, taking this out of order due to a technical malfunction, we'll call zero-nine-three-two-two Spear, trustee forty-two Lake Lehman Road, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a single-family dwelling exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures.
I have Carol Anne Spear, trustee four-oh-five Sandwich Road, East Falmouth, applying to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-dash-69E, the Code of Falmouth, to construct a single-family dwelling exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures on subject property known as forty-two Lake Lehman Road. Let's see what we have. We have no comment from planning. Sewer line must be shown on the plans. Property currently has a one-inch, that's from Water Department, and from Engineering. We have the application was reviewed for impacts to the public rights away and public utilities. Lake Lehman is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way will require a filing, to file a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights of way. Drywells are proposed, as we recommend. We recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence and affix legible numbers required, time limit for compliance. The driveway modifications, as shown, would not require a driveway permit since it will be gravel and there is no work in the town right-of-way. Please inform the applicant that any apron repair or paving of this driveway, driveway will require a driveway permit. While the site work is minimal, we request that, that a condition be included in any approval, that a catch basin filter be installed, be installed in the inlet in the front of the property and the two and two across the street. These are not shown on the plan, for the duration of the construction and until vegetation has been established. We defer to the board if the plan shall be revised to show this on the plans for final approval. And fire department has no issues. Concom has no issues. And that's it. And I think we have no letters of opposition or proposal. That's what I have.
There was a bulk calculation sheet submitted, correct? Yep.
Down here?
Go back. That one.
This one.
Would be accurate.
Yes.
I have an issue here. This lot isn't staked out and none of the proposed extensions to the foundation are staked out. And beyond that, if you go into two-forty-six-seven, this is a nine-thousand-some-odd-square-foot lot, and by the minimum lot dimensions, it's not buildable. The only way I see it can be buildable is if, under subsection four A, that the lot must be endorsed by the planning board as of April second, nineteen eighty-four. I realize there was a building permit issued, but it was under a past building inspector, and we're going to have to condition this as a buildable lot. We're going to have to make the finding that this is a buildable lot, and without that information, we could get ourselves into another turkey, like on Fowl Lane, and end up with some affordable housing. I think it would be best if we postpone that until the lot is staked out as required and the instruction sheet given out and we get in writing that is, in fact, a buildable lot.
I don't disagree about the lot being staked out, given the, the application is to exceed lot coverage by special permit. How does the board feel about the other issues raised?
I had, I drove by this twice before I found it, it's, but I did find it. I think the comment about staking is, is certainly valid, particularly in this one, and I would like to see that done too.
Jerry?
I'd like to see it staked, but I think it's inappropriate to make a comment on affordable housing, if it could not.
Well, the last time we made a mistake like this, that's what happened, and we all had egg on our face. I think it'd be for our benefit, too.
If it's a buildable lot, they have all the rights to a buildable lot.
But we have no proof that it's a buildable lot, Jerry.
We have to find it's a buildable lot first.
How can we find that without the proof that the planning board endorsed it as the condition?
Ultimately, issue for the building, the building commissioner, issue a building permit as to whether it's buildable or not.
That's right.
Our job is just to determine whether or not, from zoning standpoint, if the project is, in fact, appropriate based on zoning regulations. Buildability ultimately is going to be the building department or building inspectors to say.
And if he has to go to the planning board, he can go.
Just a second stumbling block or whatever, but the, the staking is...
The, the staking point is certainly valid. Suzanne?
No, I went up and, and the first thing I said to Ash, it's not staked, first thing I said, and I, I agree, but other than that, I had no problem with the project on its, on its own merits.
Scott?
I think everybody's already made the comments, yeah.
Madam, do you understand that the, the lots need to be staked out so that we can kind of see the scope of the work as proposed, as well as the four corners of the lot?
Okay.
It needs to be staked out, so you'll need to contact somebody to have that done. How much time do you think that you're going to need to facilitate that?
I have no idea. Shortly.
If it can be done shortly, then I think a continuance would be certainly warranted. If it can't be done shortly, my suggestion might be a withdrawal and a resubmital, so if you think it can be done shortly, then I think the board will be...
There's no way to make the seven-day requirement, so, I mean, I don't think this...
Do you have a date in mind, Norrie?
January fifth.
January fifth?
Just, just a caution that getting surveyors out these days can be difficult.
Yep.
I'll, I'll trust you when you said you don't think it's a problem.
If, so, I think the board will most likely continue to January fifth. My suggestion is that if, for some reason, you're not able to get surveyors out to stake the lot, please contact the zoning administrator in advance so that we know that this will be rescheduled and we can facilitate the appropriate timeline.
Okay.
So, is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to January fifth.
Suzanne, second?
Second.
I'll give that to Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. That is unanimous vote. Thank you for your patience this evening, ma'am.
Oh, no problem.
I'm really sorry that you had to wait this long to get a continuation. Have your technical issues been resolved, Mr. Clower?
I think so.
Returning to zero-nine-one-two-two, Barksdale, seventy-one Philadelphia Street, T-Ticket, requesting special permit to remove a portion of the existing deck and construct a second story addition to the non-conforming, single-family dwelling.
Yeah. Did I already do this?
It feels like it.
I know. Patricia Barksdale, seventy-one Philadelphia Street, T-Ticket, Max, applied to the zoning vote of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 243C and 24069E, the Code of Falmouth, to remove a portion of the existing deck and construct a second-story addition to the non-conforming, single-family dwelling on subject property seventy-one Philadelphia. I don't think I did this part yet. Planning, no comment. If I can turn papers. Water, current service is three-quarter copper from nineteen thirty-six and recommend one, one-inch upgrade. Assessors have no comment. Conservation has no comment. And we have engineering. We have the application was reviewed for impacts of the public rights away and public utilities. Philadelphia Street is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes in the right-of-way will require a, to file a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alter, alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department, and the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights of way. Drywells are proposed and we, as we typically recommend. And then we have fire department, no issues. And that's all we have for that. No letters, but I can see, am I correct? That's all we have.
One previous decision in the file.
Yes, there was one previous decision from, I wrote it down in here, from June nineteenth, nineteen ninety-seven.
For the applicant.
Do you have the bulk calculation sheet in there?
Let's look for it. Do I have it? I don't see it anywhere. Wait, wait, wait. Not in that section. Do we have that in here? Is it?
Should be.
Probably a little bit further to the back.
Further back, by the plans?
Yeah, but there's no calculations for the addition.
Hold on, here's... Oh, there is, is.
If you look at the bottom, you can see that he neglected to do the calculations for the addition, uh, only existing. There's no square footage or anything for proposed, so it's...
Questions for the applicant. For the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the, members of the board. Again, for the record, Kevin Clower. I am representing Patricia Barksdale, the owner of seventy-one Philadelphia Street. We are here tonight seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling, which with the addition of a half-story, within the existing footprint. This property, seventy-one Philadelphia, is at approximately the midpoint of Maravista Peninsula, which is, it's three lots in Great Pond. It's a very dense residential neighborhood. This particular lot is seventy-two-hundred square feet. It is in the Residential C zoning district, and shockingly, actually, to me, it's not in a flood zone. I was quite surprised by that. Presently, there's a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling with two sheds on the lot. The footprint is twenty-five hundred and eighteen square feet. It is non-conforming to front yard setback, fifteen-point-three feet where twenty-five is required, as well as to lot coverage by structure being thirty-four-point-nine-seven, where twenty's allowed by right and up to twenty-five by special permit, as well as lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking, which is forty-three-point-three percent. The applicant's proposing a half-story addition within the existing footprint in order to create a master suite on the second floor. This will bring it to a total of three bedrooms, in addition to an in-home office. That office will have a four-foot cased opening. It is on the Little Pond Sewer District, so there are four beds that are allowed by right. The applicant has proposed removing a portion of the existing deck as well. The proposal doesn't really impact the existing non-conformities, very minor change to the lot coverage, doesn't create any new dimensional non-conformity... lot coverage, doesn't create any new dimensional nonconformities. However, due to those dimensional nonconformities, it does require a special permit pursuant to sections 243(c) and 24069(e). 243(c) states that pre-existing, nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided the board finds that the proposed alterations are not substantially more detrimental than what exists. To determine this, the board is asked to consider the standards of 240-216 and whether or not this, the proposed alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, as noted, there's no new nonconformity created. The existing nonconformities are essentially unaffected. There is a minor decrease in lot coverage by structure, 10 feet, 10 square feet, which brings us down 0.14%. And there's a minor decrease in the lot coverage by structures, paving and parking as well, which is 15 square feet. There's really no change to proposed views and vistas. In the residential C zoning district, however, lot coverage by structure exceeding 20% does require a special permit pursuant to 24069(e). The board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure relative to the size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadows, the impacts on views and vistas in the public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. In this situation, there's no impact on the views and vistas from the public ways. While the structure is slightly larger, it's a very dense neighborhood and the view from the street remains effectively the same. There is a slight increase in bedrooms, but up to four bedrooms are allowed by right. We are going to three bedrooms. And as to the size and height, we did submit a lot comparison worksheet looking at the nearby properties. This is in character with the neighborhood. Mr. Fenner, into your comment. Apparently, the initial submission didn't have that section filled in, and that's an oversight on my part. I do have another one I can submit, but the proposed gross building area is 2,296 square feet, which is about 640 some odd square feet more than what currently exists. The comparison worksheet does show that the property is in character with the neighborhood. And simply looking around the neighborhood shows that it's in character with the neighborhood. This proposal's a modest addition. It's just over 600 square feet, as I mentioned, but it does have a significant impact to the owner. It does create two relatively small bedrooms on the first floor. This will allow for the creation of a master bedroom and as well as an in-home office. The existing nonconformities are unaffected. There's no new dimensional nonconformities. There's no adverse effects, and certainly none that would be substantially more detrimental than what exists. Further, this meets all the standards of 243(c), 69(e) and 240-216. For these reasons and given these considerations, I would ask that the board grant the special permit. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Questions for the board?
I talk faster as the night goes longer because I want to see the Pats game.
Start with you tonight, Jerry.
No comment.
Frank?
No.
Mark?
So that's 640 on top of the, the existing, that's not 2,500. What's the square footage of the, it was missing on the one that was there?
No, and that's my mistake. I apologize.
We'll stamp that in after Fenner takes a look at it at the record. Suzanne, any questions?
Nope.
Scott?
Well, they're certainly on the high end in the outlier, but I guess when I looked at 65 Philadelphia, it seemed to make a little bit more sense to me. No, no caution.
Yeah, looking through the area, there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of single-story homes, but there's a lot of one and a half-story homes too. And that's what they're proposing. And, you know, you're correct, it is on the higher end, but I think it's certainly within the character of the neighborhood.
Agreed. Two questions, Mr. Clower. Just wanted to make sure I was looking at the print. Are these stairs to the basement or exterior?
Someone's saying yes.
Kind of looked at that one.
Another country heard from, yes.
Wanted to make sure that I'm not looking at the wrong set of plans.
I thought Ms. Barksdale was here tonight, but I hadn't had a chance to meet her yet, so Ms. Barksdale is here this evening.
Good evening. So one of the things we're, I think, I'm not opposed to the project, I think it's in keeping with the neighborhood, but one concern I always have in Maravista and other parts of town is when existing modest two-bedroom homes are now getting bumped up and out, which is up there right based on sewer ring, and I'm not concerned about that, is you just put something in the record about how this affects affordability.
So I... Referring to 240-216, which has...
Back to the proposed project on the adequacy and the supply of affordable housing in the town.
Yeah, I would, just my statement would be that this doesn't affect the supply of affordable housing. Quite honestly, as much as we think of Maravista, sometimes think of Maravista in certain ways, homes in Maravista aren't affordable. They're not low-income homes. They're not, gone are the days of $200,000 and $300,000 homes in Maravista. The assessed value of the structure as is is over almost $700,000.
But you would agree with a substantial improvement that the affordability would be even less.
Sure, but I don't think, I don't, my point remains that it doesn't affect the, doesn't affect the amount of affordable housing in town one way or the other, whether it remains as is or is improved.
Thank you. Any other follow-up questions?
No, I just would point out, I mean, it is the largest house on the street. Not that I, I mean, it's only 640 feet. I actually thought it was more, but the calculations weren't there. But there are, between that and Cypress, I mean, the lion's share of the houses there are, you know, two-bedroom, single-story houses, which would be the ones that would actually affect the affordability. Not so much this one, I would surmise.
Public comment? Seeing none, how would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close?
Motion to close. Scott, second, by Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Hearing is closed. No more testimony will be taken. Discussion on the project.
I'm okay with it, quite honestly.
Suzanne?
I am too. There's not really much of a change in percentages, so I have no problem.
I have no objection, given there's been no neighbor objection. Mark?
Now, it's, as I said, I expected it was more, but 640 feet on top of 1,600. I mean, it's... And I have to say that the design kind of minimizes the structure and it does shoehorn nicely into the neighborhood. You might want to keep that in mind for the future when things get a little bit closer. You know what I'm saying?
Frank?
No, I found that the presentation was satisfactory, so I'm okay with this.
No comment.
No comment. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve?
Conditions made by Scott, second by Suzanne. Findings?
Findings, we have, it's in a RC district, overlay is Great Pond, not in a flood zone. Surprise, surprise. It has a previous special permit in 97. Lot size is 7,200, public right-of-way. Existing is 2,518 with 34.9%. Total is 3,138 with 43.6. Proposed is 2,508 at 34.8 and total is 3,123 at 43.3. And that includes the sheds, correct?
Yes.
Okay. It's sewed.
Three bedrooms?
Three bedrooms. Oh, that's, I think that's all I have. No letters?
243(c), 24069(e).
Thank you. Testimony was, yeah, going to three bedrooms, there'll be a cased opening at the office. Any other findings?
Nope.
No opposition?
No opposition.
Right. Hearing or entered. Conditions? Per plans? Hours of work?
Hours of work.
Incorporate the various referrals in the file.
Right, from the file. The water.
No additional lot coverage, sheds are whatever.
Yeah.
Storage bins.
The additional conditions from that aside?
Pretty simple one.
Norrie, anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed.
Thank you very much. A quick question, if I may. Does the board still plan to have the discussion on lot coverage calculations this evening? Or is that, given the hour, going to happen on a different night? Because I would love to go home, but I want to be here for that conversation.
I was going to request the continuance because, again, reading through this Duco Res, whatever it is, case, there were new things brought to my attention. Yes, gross square foot area, mass. I mean, there's a lot of instruction that I got from this particular judge in this case, and I've read it three times, but I really need to read it again, so I was going to request that we put it off.
And given the late hour that we're not done with the business, we have other hearings...
I'll stop talking now, so Laura, Laura...
I'll probably continue this at a different time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Motion to extend?
Yes, given it's 9:30, I'll entertain a motion to extend the business of the board in time, please.
Attorney, how much time do you think you need? Motion to extend to 9:45.
How about 10?
10? Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second to Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. The ayes have it. Next up, we have Daphne, 9422, 175 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to convert the existing church into professional office space.
We have Michael Daphne, 200 Palmer Rav, applying to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-28(e) and 243(c) of the Code of Falmouth to convert an existing church into professional office space on subject property 175 Palmer. And we have historical. And you had a meeting with them on 11/1.
But there's nothing in the file, right?
No, I think, isn't there, there's a letter, I thought. Scott, hold on. Yes.
I think they're on board.
They are on board. They just had some findings, some conditions. Do you want me to read them?
No.
No.
We can incorporate later.
Incorporate. All right, historical, we just did that. Water. Existing church has a three-quarter copper fed off an eight-inch AC water line. Water service needs to be upgraded to a one-inch to comply. Water meter needs to be located inside the structure. No comment from assessors. Let's see. Oh, boy. And we have a lot from engineering. Ready? This application was reviewed for impacts, public rights away and public utilities. A, Lakeview Ave is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way will require filing a permit with the engineering division. B, Palmer Avenue is a state right-of-way in this area. Any alterations within the right-of-way will require permission from Mass DOT. A copy of the plan was forwarded to District 5 permits engineer. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town departments. This project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abuttes, or public rights-of-ways. What is shown on the plans will not require a driveway permit. We require the following condition be included or similar in any approval. Upon completion of the construction, affixing legible numbers is required. Time limit for compliance. Where this site, where this site abuts the town right-of-way, we request that erosion and sediment controls are included in this project to protect the towns right-of-way. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated line of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls. We recommend the following condition. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Document can be found on the engineering division's page of the town website. References to the town of public engineering division shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals who will be permitting. What is, what is shown, seven. What is shown for proposed parking striping in the existing paved parking area does not appear to fully comply. There appears to be enough room to meet all the requirements. The number of parking spaces appears to exceed by one space. The drive aisle meets the required 24-foot wide minimum for two-way traffic. The plans show the spaces would meet the town's size requirements at 9 by 18. Note that the overall parking bay dimensions exceed the width for the number of spaces based on the nine-foot width. There is one proposed accessible parking space with access aisle, however, that does not appear to meet requirements. The access aisle is required to be five feet wide, with the accessible space is, and the accessible space is required at a minimum of eight feet wide. The plans do not show a dimension for the accessible space, but does show the access aisle at only four feet wide. We defer to the board, we defer to the board and you should be advised. That's engineering. Fire department has no issues. Concom, no issues. No issues there in the, oh, wait. Historical, any new work? Oh, this is just the end of the other one, so we'll just do the whole historical in the end. We have two letters of support. I don't see any opposition. I think just two letters of support, correct? Yep. That's what we have.
And for the apple. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Laura Moynihan, a Falmouth attorney. Before we get going, I just, we did have an opportunity to update the plan to show the correct aisle width on the handicap space, so just to be the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, there was a referral from, or information provided by Mass DOT about the possibility of working within the state layout and the, and that just came in a day or so ago. So the original plan was showing a removal of a piece of walkway from the state layout. And in order to do that, it would require going to Mass DOT and going through this whole permit process. So the applicant decided to leave the piece of walkway in the state layout. And so all work will be done within the bounds of the property. So you'll see that noted on that, on that plan. With me tonight is Mr. Daphne, the applicant, and Tom Bunker, whose firm has done the engineering and survey work. So this is the GIS map for the property, showing it at the corner of Palmer Avenue and Lakeview Avenue. It's identified there in green. It is a mixed-use neighborhood. The lot size is just under 16,000 square feet. Zone general residence, existing lot coverage is 17.52% by structure, and overall lot coverage is 52.85%, which is nonconforming. So we are nonconforming to the front yard setback to Palmer Avenue. There's a 35-foot setback required where this building's at 24.8 feet. Nonconforming to the overall lot coverage, which is 50% in a general residence district, although the structure is conforming. The property has been used as a church for many years. The original deed and the title was 1942, passing to the church. It was acquired by Mr. Daphne's LLC from the church in 2021, and we're requesting a special permit for use of the property as professional offices. Under 24023(e) of the zoning bylaw, professional offices would be permitted in this location because it has frontage on Palmer Avenue. It is not within one of the areas identified in the bylaw where professional offices would not be permitted, and it's within 500 feet of a business or light industrial district. This is the zoning map, just to give, to establish that 500-foot, you'll see the property down in the far corner, and you have light industrial across the street, as well as B3 across the street, and then B2 in the rear. This is just a drawing of the site plan to give you the dimensions, an idea of the building, obviously in the green, and the parking lot at the rear of the building. Mr. Daphne would like to rework the pathways on the, on the plan so that there'll be an access, only two access points from the parking lot. One coming in at the top off Lakeview, and then the southern access would be an ADA, accessible handicap ramp into the building. No changes to the setback, the nonconforming setback at the front, it'll stay the same. The setbacks, like I said, would remain the same except for the ramp at the south side, which will still be conforming at 10.9 feet. which will still be conforming at 10.9 feet. Pass at the front in northeast to be removed. The parking does comply with the bylaw requirement of 10.8 spaces. 14 are being provided. New septic system and landscaping to be improved. This is the floor plan, just giving you an idea. You'll see the ramp access at the top of the plan, coming into the general office and waiting area, and then you'll see the office rooms, 1, 2, and 3 on the left side, and then on the right, two more. The open area, the staff area, and laundry area, and other staff areas. This is the landscape plan. This is one of the standards under the professional office section. So essentially, what Mr. Duffany would like to do is really just relocate and supplement the existing landscape. So when those two walkways come out at the front of the building and the northeast, those areas will be loomed and seeded, and then the shrubs will be relocated in the locations that we're showing. And the parking spaces will be relined. So the project details, we're going to increase the lot coverage just very slightly. The lot coverage by structures, pavement, I'm sorry, the lot coverage by structures will be increased very slightly, under 1%, but still conforming at under 20%. The lot coverage overall will be reduced to 47.93, which will now be conforming under the 50%. Building height is 24 feet. The entry porch will be rebuilt. There'll be an ADA compliant ramp and landing that will be rebuilt. The exterior and interior renovations overall will be an improvement, and the Historical Commission has given its approval. And these are the Section 243C standards, which you're well aware of. Improvements to the site and the building will be of benefit to the town and the neighborhood. They'll reduce lot coverage overall to a conforming level. No increase to the nonconforming front yard setback, no change in building height, no adverse impacts to the town or neighborhood. And 23E is the professional offices section, so it has its own sort of criteria. The proposed use with the landscaping will be suitable transition and/or buffer between the business, light industrial, and the residential district. The visual character of the neighborhood or surrounding areas will be improved without any negative impacts. I would submit those have been met. And more standards, will not have a negative impact on traffic flow or safety. The existing access is off of Lakeview Ave., and that will be maintained. There's no vehicle access off Palmer Ave. proposed, and the project doesn't result in any new construction or modification that requires more than 13 parking spaces. The required parking is 10 and a half, or 10-point something, under 11. Not substantially more detrimental. No beneficial impacts to the town and neighborhood. Allows for a suitable use and rehabilitation of the historic church building, and the standards of 240216 will be met. Mr. Duffany's proposing to lease the property once it's renovated to a physical therapist's office. And that is our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I'm sorry for going so quickly, but hopefully that wasn't too fast, given the hour.
Questions from the board, start with you, Jerry.
No comment.
Frank?
No.
No. And it looks like if you were in need of additional parking, you have room to have it, to create it. I don't have any questions. I always like to see an unused building used.
I think it's a great project.
Thank you, yeah.
No, no, this, again, the applicant did a very nice job, actually, on slides 18 and 19. In the application, it was nice where you have the existing and the proposed elevations right next to each other. Usually, we're kind of leafing through to find those, so I like that aspect. No, good project?
That was a comment that I meant to make as well. That's very handy, having the proposed and existing, I mean, it's only two pages.
I'm with you.
When I'm walking around in the wind and I got a thumb on one page and a whole, and I mean...
I was very impressed by that. I think that was great.
Everyone should take Spikes or, as an example, I mean, I'd like to see every set of plans like that. It would make our work much easier.
Public comment, sir.
Good evening. My name is Paul Dryer. I live across the street from the property here, and I came here just for a brief comment. I sent a letter. Unfortunately, it was misdirected, so I came here tonight to try and respond quickly. And I'll be very brief. There is a football game on tonight, as you may not know.
They're losing.
It's halftime.
17 to 7.
I've been apprised of what's going on at that property. I've been in the building, and I'm in favor of the change from the church to professional office. I think the application should be approved. The project will be considered benefit to the neighborhood and will be an improvement to this property. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your patience this evening, waiting for the last hearing. And I'll just comment that, yeah, it's always very nice to see a building that is going to be rehabbing, going to be used, so. How would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to close.
Motion to close by Suzanne. Is there a second?
Second.
If, that's Scott. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does the board need any discussion on this project?
I think we've had it.
How would, how would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve with conditions, second. Second, give that to Mark. Findings?
Findings, it's in a GR and an RC district. The structure itself is in a GR. No overlay, no flood, no previous zoning permits. Lot size is 15,912. It's on a public road. Existing is 27,88 with 17.5% coverage. Total is 25,49 with 17.90. With the proposal, existing is, right now, the building is 8,412, 52.8. Proposed will be 76,26 at 47.9. Septic. Water will be three-quarter inch down to one. We did have a person speak in support. No letters of opposition.
Approval from Historical Commission.
Yes, approval from.
243C, 24023E. You can find that there is not going to be any increase on traffic. Visual change to the neighborhood. Just want to reference Norine, various standards have all been demonstrated for approval. It's not more detrimental. Any additional findings?
Yes.
Conditions? Incorporate anything from the historical.
Historical, engineering.
Engineering.
Water.
Hours of work.
Hours.
There's sufficient spots in the back. I would imagine they kept everything off the road, not just have them work with the police department. Additional conditions on this side? I have the offer.
That's okay.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oh, just one moment. Certainly. We'll, motion to reopen the hearing.
It's just a correction, and I apologize. The plan that I gave you, because of the change with the state layout, the size of the lot actually increased by 17 square feet. So the data that Suzanne was reading off, it's just slightly off by like .01%, so...
We'll call that a Stribner's error and correct it based on the recent plans.
I just wanted to disclose that so that you, I didn't want to mislead anybody. And the other thing is that you may want to add a condition that the septic system be subject to the requirements of the health agent, because he did ask in his referral for a different-sized tank, which we put on there for him, but just full disclosure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my blank motion incorporating referrals and comments from other boards.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't see help in here.
Vote the minutes? Want to vote?
Where are they in the campaign?
We're going to vote the minutes, or?
Yep, next up, we have a public meeting.
Congratulations. Vote the minutes for October 20th, just the 20th.
All right, has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes of November 20th?
Yes.
Any comments or corrections?
Seven still.
No. Vote to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Of October 20th.
October 20th, made by Scott. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, that is a vote. We have an open meeting.
Staking policy and lot coverage, bulk calculation policy.
I think at this point, given the late hour, we need to continue that to another date unless someone is strongly...
It's halftime, let's relax.
The legal decision, Mark is going to probably bring up.
I would, yeah, I would ask Norine if that could be circulated if this...
How many are we going to be discussing it?
That's submitted.
Well, but just identify it if it was previously submitted.
Seducant. I probably deleted it, so I'd appreciate it. They submitted it twice.
I deleted it twice. Just go with the chairman's recommendation. Anything that was submitted or that was referenced that would like to be resubmitted, through Norine to the board, please.
Okay.
Board updates?
Any board updates, other than it's halftime?
Yeah.
Very good.
And we're losing?
New agenda items?
None.
I think we get a deal with the old ones first.
Yeah. Next hearing, I believe, is the week, one week today, December 8th, here at Town Hall, 6:30. See everyone then. Anyway, thank you.
Could have been a lot worse.